Okay, this is the May 14th, 2015, Situate Planning Board Meeting. We have an agenda proposed for the meeting. Do we have a second?
I move that we -- the agenda.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Okay, 7:30. This is a continuation of a public hearing for the mixed-use special permit in the Village Over -- Business Overlay District for 50 Country Way. Can ask you gentlemen to step up and...
By this time, we feel like we're old friends.
Yeah.
We're all older.
I hope we're friends.
As my euphemism, we're all more mature.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. I think you've had some additional homework to do, and I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Ford.
Well, as I understand it, you know, we pretty much covered all of the outstanding conditions in the draft, out of conditions. And the remaining outstanding issue was reaching an agreement with the MBTA over the easement issue. And we've taken a number of steps since we last met, in addition to the ones we had taken before. And they -- I've shared the communications, you know, with Laura and then with the commission. And they're prepared essentially to do it, but they're using a company called Greco, which represents the MBTA and its real estate transactions. And it requires a number of steps. We've -- Greg has submitted all of the requirements that they've looked for in terms of the engineering of the project and the rationale. And the T is now going through a final canvassing through their different departments. But essentially, we've answered all of the questions they've asked. And Laura has evidence of that through communication we received in Monday. And we have submitted the final -- well, I was surprised we had to pay for this, but disappointing, but we have to pay $15,000 between legal fees and review fees and, you know, licensing fee. And so, all of that is in place. And we thought the T should pay us for improving access to their station, but, you know, they didn't see it that way. But I think they're very pleased that we're taking this initiative and to make that connector. And it's just gonna be, you know, but nothing's done until it's finally done. And they have to -- there's a procedure in place. And Greco does all of the initial work, and then they've already discussed it with the MBTA, and they're saying, all right, now they go through, and everyone's got to check off the box, so to speak, as they review the project. So that's where we stand with them. We anticipate by the end of the month having the full easement and the full license agreement in our hands. And as I understand the language here, if for some reason it should be a problem, we come back with an alternative plan. But apparently, there's no reason to hold up the process.
Great. Laura?
Yeah, we got a lot of correspondence from Chris between the MBTA and himself about this easement, and it was clear that they were responding, and they wanted to, you know, move things ahead. They weren't getting in the way. From what I've heard, it is a little bit of a process, and there are different things that different people look at, and it's not like a rubber stamp, and it's not guaranteed. But given that, you know, nobody really should be guaranteeing anything like this. Given that, we tried to craft, I tried to craft a condition that would just ask Chris to provide information and documentation on what kind of easement he got, so that, you know, we would have that as part of the file. And that if for some reason he can't meet either the MBTA's conditions, or that they won't allow the construction of the emergency access, that then he would come back, or someone would come back and submit an alternative plan before anything could be built. So, you know, it seems like that would cover the bases.
Questions from the board?
Have you had a chance to review the draft condition?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yeah. There are no surprises. It's pretty much everything is discussed, and yeah, that's right.
So I think we may have the motion in the form with everything in it, but what whoever reads it could do is just kind of skip to number six and just refer to the rest of it as what's already been discussed.
So everything but number six has been -- we've been through it in the last two sessions on this document, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna ask you to, like, catch us up. I can't remember where we left off.
Yeah, we did get all the way through, and the changes that we made are all in here. They're either bold, or in mind, they're underlined.
Or strike cuts.
That were, you know, adding snow plowing to the maintenance. We modified the description of where the vertical granite curb would be.
Where is that?
That's on page four. That's going around the curve as you come in. That's what, you all had quite a discussion about that, and that's where it ended up.
Good.
Okay.
And then it would go to the concrete. What was the word, the concrete curbing? Is that correct?
It's gonna be a hunched -- I think it's a hunched concrete sidewalk, isn't it?
Cast in place.
Yeah, that's the word, a cast in place curbing for the concrete. Okay.
So whoever wants to read this can just move that the planning board approve with all the conditions previously discussed as modified, and with condition six as follows.
Okay. Before we do that, was there any other questions from the board?
Did we decide whether it was apartments or condos?
I don't think that decision was ever, you know, really on the table. I mean, it can be.
We've said they were either be one or the other, or condominiums, not both.
Right.
And that's reflected in item five, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard?
I move that the planning board approve the special permit that we, the mixed-use special permit 50 Country Way, previously, the conditions that had been read that were on March 9th, 2015, revised on March 17th, 2015, and then these updates that I'm going to be reading today on May 14th, 2015. So the revised condition for the general requirements, number six, "The applicant shall furnish written documentation that the MBTA will allow installation of improvements for the use of their property for emergency egress for the Green Bush Station development at 50 Country Way, as shown on the above referenced plan, and including all items required in condition 20 below. This may consist of an easement, license, or similar legal document. The applicant shall make the town aware of any requirements of the MBTA that must be met in connection with construction of these improvements, which shall be deemed conditions of this special permit. If the applicant cannot meet the MBTA conditions, or the MBTA changes its preliminary agreement and does not allow construction and use of the emergency egress slash public access path, the applicant shall notify the town forthwith and submit an application for approval of a modification to the special permit with an alternative plan." And also amended is phasing and public benefits, that's the next one, right, where we are amending, "The maintenance shall include snow plowing on item 20."
We've been through that, right?
You've discussed that already.
We've been through all those.
The only thing you have to do is six, Richard.
What about the --
You're good right where you are.
What about the, I don't remember the vertical granite curbing discussed, I mean, we discussed it, but...
It's in there.
It's written in here.
So it's all there? Okay. All right.
I'm sorry.
Okay, then, just the item number six for the easement of the MBTA. And otherwise, the conditions that were read previously still stand.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Discussion? One question, if I could bring it up, is, is there a timing issue here? This has to be provided by a particular time?
I think they sent, I think in one of the emails, they said they expected this to all take place by, was it the end of May?
Right. She said they're dealing with lots of things like snow plow, whatever, I mean, all winter issues.
I'm not really talking about what they said they can accomplish, but more, when do they, in the process, when do they need to have this? Will this prevent them moving forward to something, some other stage in the project? Or do we need to...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and that would be, my suggestion would be prior to the pre-construction, prior to scheduling, the pre-construction conference.
So...
So this could be taken out of this section and put in under required prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference on page five.
Page five.
Is that okay with the applicant? Simply add it to 23.
Yeah, sure.
So the idea would be, we would move this item six...
Right in front of 23.
To right in the front of the current number 23.
Because this would become 23, and then everything's...
Would be renumbered thereafter.
Yeah, I guess this would, okay, now, this, taking this one out, the numbers are gonna be smaller, so this one would be 22. It would just be after, it would be right before 23, and everything else would stay the same, because you're just moving it from six to, you're taking it out at six, so number seven becomes six, and so on.
So this would become number 22, then?
Yeah.
Can't you just edit the sentence to 23 and leave six where it is?
Yeah.
Just reference that to six.
Why not just reference six?
Well, because I think it's really easy for whoever is really using this to have all the pre-construction things, like, together. I mean, people who are using it, like, including us and...
But couldn't you just do 23?
You could certainly do that. I just, I think this is a little bit easier, but, you know, whatever you want to do.
I wouldn't leave, under the general requirements, I think it should be there as well. It doesn't hurt to have it in both places, does it?
Well, let's just write it in one place.
Okay.
So potentially, it's a new 24 that just says, "The item six of the general requirements must be met."
Well, yeah, I mean, I thought instead of adding an extra one to just, like, move it, but, you know, I think that makes it easier for whoever is working with these to, like, have everything together. It just kind of keeps it organized. It's like having everything, you know, at one stage of anything, like, all together.
Laura, 28 was the original wording of this particular issue, and it's been stricken. Why not just substitute six back into that 28?
Okay, sure. And then everything's on...
And then everything lines up from that on, from then on. It's the original numbering.
Sure.
The number's available, right?
Because 27 goes to 26, then.
So you keep it as number six in the general...
You know what I mean? So you take six out every number?
I had no idea this was gonna be this complicated.
Shoot!
I would say you take number six out, just lift it out, and you'll renumber all of these, right? And number six becomes number 22.
I don't want to make it too difficult, but if we just leave six, so you don't have to renumber, just leave it the way it is, and as Bob said, all you have to do is take, which was 28 is stricken, now just put it back in.
Yeah, but there's also another 28.
There's another 28.
Well, okay, yes, and renumber from that point on.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it just basically says that you have to have, maybe not the...
This isn't, I don't think that's difficult to just renumber these and move it.
No, it's not.
And if it helps to have it all in one place, let's just do that.
I think it's helpful for those of us that have to work with these things and check them off and so on, instead of hunting all through it for one that could be sort of, you know, you don't want these things to get lost. So I think it's easiest for us who work with them to have them, like, all in one place, if that's okay with the board.
We can find it. We start with six, and then we'll go to 22, and then we'll go to 28.
Okay, that sense, yeah. So that means it's okay...
Can we vote it as, with that change?
Yeah.
We don't have to make the change and then come back next time and vote it.
No, just say, and renumber it as appropriate, or whatever you want.
Trust your planner to do it.
Yeah, really. I'm sure you folks don't need to come back a second.
We don't need to come back a second.
So we've got a, it's been moved and seconded on this particular, on the whole document, actually, right? And what we're doing is modifying it by moving this to the appropriate section and renumbering.
Yeah.
Do you want me to redo the motion again? I mean, just to say...
Just amend the motion to...
Yeah, I amend my previous motion to include the renumbering and the inclusion of the, at the pre-construction conference, of the easement access by the MBTA. And those renumbering of the documents and have it make sense.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay!
Thank you.
Where's the champagne?
We're done. Well, you know what? I thought it would be too early in the evening for you guys all to be drinking champagne, but we're three hearings behind us, so I'm gonna go home and drink it by myself. Greg and I are going to go.
A glass for each of us.
Thank you.
I shall, I shall. Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you back here in a few weeks with your next project, Chris.
Well, you know, yeah, this is a, this is a chapter in my life, and it's been fun, yeah, right?
There you go.
So Greg's ready for your next agenda.
We're glad it was good for you, Chris.
Okay.
I'm done, okay.
And we finished quite early.
Sign, and, you know.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Chris.
I think you're gonna be happy, and I think the town's gonna be happy, and I think this, I hope this will assess the stage for...
Great thing.
Green Bush Village.
Walkable, sustainable development?
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Okay, so at the moment, we're, we have to wait to 8:15 for the public hearing, correct?
Can we slot in some business?
Let's slot in some other business here. How about...
Is there accounting or minutes?
Are we expecting somebody to show up for the common driveway plan?
No.
Oh, they're gonna, oh, I thought they were gonna present and then continue?
No, that's the deciding, not the others. Deciding of the common driveway, 529, 531.
Oh, okay.
Coming in on that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but, and we do have a motion for that.
So let's do it.
This is just to endorse the plans for that common driveway.
Okay. Now, I guess to think about this.
Don't think about it too much.
Okay, okay, all right.
You can renumber at six.
"I move that the planning board sign the common driveway special permit plans and common driveway slash stonewall agreement for 529 and 531 Country Way by SITEC, revised dated May 5th, 2015, consisting of a common driveway, easement plan, common driveway plan, and site details, as all the conditions of the decision have been met, and the operations and maintenance plan with the common driveway slash stonewall agreement have been provided as a stand-alone document."
You have a second?
Yep.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And this is the...
How about accounting?
If they want, right, whenever they want to sign it. It's a lot of signing on that one. Okay, Karen's telling me there is a lot of signing on that, if you want to be signing now, so you don't have to do it at the end of the night.
Isn't it ABS, always be signing?
Yeah, sure.
That's a, that's a movie quote from, if you don't know, always be closing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right.
ABC.
Yeah, let's, I mean...
Okay, and then we have accounting and minutes, too, if you want those.
Sure. Let's do those first, all right. All right, "I move that we approve $650 to the Horsley-Witten Group for, oh, this was the meeting for Seaside at Situate by Toll Brothers. It was the pre-application meeting. And, what was it, I'm sorry, what's it for, like, the meeting itself, was it the engineers?
This was the meeting of just the engineers, of the town's engineer, the consulting engineer, and Toll Brothers' engineer.
Okay, so that was 650. Also, $60 to Laura Hallbottle for reimbursement for the MAPD annual conference.
Make sure she can take out the electric car.
And $196.98 to Gatehouse Media for legal ads in the Situate Marina for the Inlay School, and for the 35 Dreamwall Common Driveway Special Permit. Also, $1,560 to Merrill Corporation for Engineering Peer Review for the Inlay School, and the Classroom Edition, by Merrill Engineers.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's number one. Yeah.
So you can pass those down, if we only need three signatures. You can read what we said.
Okay. You're good. All right. And Karen had put this into one of our packets, one of the email, one of the many emails that we got over the last couple of weeks. "I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board Minutes for April 23rd, 2015."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are the only ones? Okay.
Great.
Common driveway appointment, do you want them to sign?
Are we sure it's the same, or is it because they're on local?
I do.
Yeah, sure.
Here's the...
So that's what I was saying, I have two here.
Okay, that's great.
And then I have, these are all laid out, the Mylar's, the common driveway layout, and we have signed prints for...
Okay. So shall we take a break and do that now?
These are the minutes?
Please, I will take time at the end of the night.
That'd be nice, sure.
Yep.
So why don't we...
That one's got three, I guess.
I have the motion to take a 20-minute break. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
As we sign. Street signs? That's nice.
Yeah.
How did the design review go with the signs?
I think they're gonna be coming back. They weren't crazy about any of the signs that they had for the Harbor Medical Building, so they're...
What was wrong with Herringbrook Mall?
Well, no, what happened was, the gentleman, I can't remember his name...
They were, I didn't know they were critical of that one.
No, I didn't say they were critical, I just said, why wouldn't you put a sign up like Herringbrook Mall?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, that was, it's basically what they are gonna do. That was the proposal. And I think what happened is, the gentleman from the Driftway Medical Center, what was his name?
Do you mean Driftway Medical Center or Harbor Medical Building?
The building, Steve.
56.
So from the time that Steve was at our planning board meeting, to the time at the design review meeting, he didn't really have time to rework the signs. So it was the same information, basically. He just showed the same signs, and the design review committee basically had the same thoughts that we did.
We don't like plastic.
We don't like plastic. And, you know, what, you know, but they basically, I think, iterated or said a little bit more detail about what they were looking for. And the Harbor, I don't know, Herring Brook Mall, or whatever that is.
Herring Brook.
Herring Brook, I see I'm all screwed up on my names tonight. So the Herring Brook Mall was one of the ones that they said would be nice, and he mentioned about, you know, elevating the current sign.
It's perfect, because you just raise a sign up, and you sit down, you put a lot of words in it.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're gonna do.
So he's gonna come back with a proposal and have the design review committee meet again.
I'll have to burbines.
But there was no decision made, I guess, long story short.
That's what I'm gonna call it.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we go back on the record here?
Well, a suspect order?
Yes.
We were in disorder?
Yes, we were in disorder. We're good to go with the DBK.
Recce.
We still have a few minutes. Laura, is there anything, we've got a few minutes on the liaison report?
Or the town planner report?
Sure, I can bring people up to speed on what we're doing with the consulting engineer selection now.
Oh, is that this memo?
I think I, I might have talked to you about this a little bit earlier, but I think we're making it kind of more established. We're gonna have sets of two consulting engineers, which are gonna rotate among all the different consulting engineers, the four that we have, so that, you know, they're all equally distributed, and there's not, like, five pairs with one person, you know, for, like, five times, and then, you know, not again for, like, another five times. It's not gonna be like that, it's all gonna be all mixed in. And the applicants will get two prices on two different consulting engineers, and they'll get to pick whichever one they want. And I'm hoping that that brings an end to some of the negativity that we've had about the whole process, because it gives people a choice, it doesn't make us crazy as far as having to, like, get four of them all at once, because we are so busy down there that that would be a bit of a burden for us. But it does give a choice, and, you know, the two people will never be the same, well, they'll be the same, too, but it'll be, like, every seven times that, you know, that they repeat, so.
So it'd be two different consulting engineers each time?
Yeah, it'll be like AB, and then CD, and then AC, and BD. You know, it'll be, like, switching around like that.
Okay.
So there's a whole algorithm to it.
Whatever an algorithm is, that's what it is.
And this is, this is a done deal?
Well, we talked about it. I mean, it doesn't have to be a done deal. I mean, if you want to do something else...
No, I'm just saying, has it already been, I don't remember discussing that particular, this particular approach, so I might have been absent.
Maybe I talked about it with Bill, and not with the whole group.
Okay.
So does anyone have any questions or thoughts about that?
No, I think it sounds like a fine idea.
Sounds reasonable.
Good, well, we'll try it, if it doesn't work, we'll move on to something else. But hopefully, it works.
Anything else? We've got two minutes.
Okay, I don't think we can do 214 Clap Road in two minutes. We got a package on eliminating all the streets in the Goldston property. I'm gonna make sure DBW has a chance to look at it, and possibly Town Council. So for instance, 8th Avenue, 9th Avenue, where those ran up into the Goldston property, those are all gonna be discontinued. There are some easements to the town for water mains up there. You know, there might be some things we want to do, like to make sure those water mains don't stay there, or whatever. But that is gonna be distributed to all of you for you to at least look at, and we'll also see if there's any official action that needs to be taken on it.
Can you explain that again, in the sense of, it's the easement? Because, I mean, for instance, like, 8th Street doesn't go into the property now.
They're paper streets, Richard.
Yeah, they're paper streets, and they're, like, an awful lot of small ones within, there's like Pershing Avenue, they're ones that, you know, most people have never heard of because they've never been built. But they were done when Goldston was subdividing the property.
I see, but they're still on the record.
And they're still on the record.
So this is striking those streets, so there's no confusion?
Yeah, and also so there are no setbacks required.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, close enough to... Close enough to 815, then let's, uh, move on to the public hearing for the Common Driveway Special Permit for 35 Dreamwald Road.
I have to recuse myself now.
I'm sorry?
I have to recuse myself now.
Okay.
It doesn't need to go, right?
No, it has to do with the fact that the way the trust has set up, money is gonna go into a charity of which I'm under board records.
Okay. I think you mentioned that before.
Same way I mentioned last night.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, can you, why don't we turn it over to you, if you can identify yourself and whoever's here for this particular special permit will...
Yep.
Let you start here.
Sure. For the record, my name is Jeff Hassett. I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm here with Greg Morse from Morse Engineering. And the applicant is the Susan A. Fippen Trust, and the trustees are Maureen Hurley and Kim Stewart. Um, this project is a four-lot A&R subdivision. Three of the lots will be serviced by a common driveway. So you had a hearing for the A&R subdivision about a month ago, that, um, tonight's hearing is for the Common Driveway Special Permit application. Um, to refresh your memory, the property is a total of about five acres in size. It's 4.7 acres of upland. The wetland portion is highlighted in blue. It's in the northwest corner along Dreamwald Road. That was delineated by Brad Holmes. And the project requires a notice of intent filing with the Conservation Commission, and that's being reviewed concurrently. The property is currently developed with one single-family home, which is this one to remain. That home has an associated driveway coming off of Dreamwald Road, a garage, an outbuilding in the back, and a swimming pool. So we're proposing a new common driveway to service the two additional lots as well as the existing lot. So being these three properties, Lot 1 is an A&R lot exclusive of the common driveway. They'll have their own individual driveway off of Dreamwald Road. Um, the location of the driveway is in the same location as the existing driveway. We'll widen it for the beginning portion to 16 feet wide, where it's servicing three, all three of the dwellings, and then it'll go down to 14 feet. Right now, the plans are drafted with a 12-foot individual, the private portion of the driveway beyond the common driveway. Uh, we've met with the fire chief. He's okay with the general project, but he'd like to widen those portions to 14 feet, and that is acceptable to us. Your bylaw for the common driveway mentions preserving natural features like mature trees. So we've located, we've located all of the trees in the front yard. Um, so the front yard is currently lawn right up to Dreamwald Road and right to a portion of the B, uh, the DPW. And there's quite a few mature cedar trees, a few maple trees. So we're able to meander the driveway around those trees to, to save as many as possible. There probably are about four or so that have to go, but most of them will remain and kind of create a nice rural feel, um, separate the houses from Dreamwald Road a little bit. Uh, we're provide, required to provide a 20-by-30 hammerhead turnaround. We're providing a 20-by-45 hammer round, so that exceeds the requirement. We've provided site distance calculations that are shown on the plan. For utilities, each one of the homes will be serviced by a new, uh, a new water service, individual services. We're not proposing a new hydrant or looped water main, because there's a hydrant right at the entrance to this property that's been reviewed by the fire department and the DPW. They'll have individual utility services as well, and each lot will have its own septic system, private septic system. The maximum length of a common driveway is 1,000 feet. We're at 360 feet, so we comply with that. For drainage, we are providing, um, three rain gardens, a storm scepter, particle separator, um, curbing, swales. The intent of that is the, the normal intent for stormwater, can control the peak rates and volumes of runoff, provide groundwater recharge, and treat the water quality volume. Um, so I, I think we, with this project, we meet the purpose of the common driveway to, which is to reduce the number of access points, protect the wetlands, and preserve the rural atmosphere. We've received review comments from the DPW and the fire department in favor of the plan, and we also have review comments from Sean Chessier. Um, most of the comments are about stormwater. We are not, we just received the comments, so I've read through them, but we're not prepared to address all of them right now. So I think the intent of tonight's meeting, meeting would be to gather as much information and as many comments as possible, and within the next week or two, we'll revise plans addressing all of the comments.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Laura?
Um, we, uh, started on, on this review application, um, something new, where we're trying to work very closely with the Conservation Commission instead of, um, you know, just kind of finding out at the end what some of their issues are. So, uh, one of the things that came up on this application was the question of whether the wetland was a vernal pool.
Yes. That was from our last meeting, right? Yeah.
I think it was, there was emails back and forth.
There was some email around. I don't think we, um, in that chair, we discussed this. We might have discussed that it was, it was possible. Um, anyhow, it took a long time to get a consultant for the Conservation Commission to go out there, and I'm not sure if they ever, um, did get their own, um, person out there, but they did go out today with, uh, Brad Holmes and, I think, a couple of the Conservation Commission members, and they determined that there was not a vernal pool out there. The reason that that's important is because the setbacks are much greater. So if it was, you know, the driveway and the houses would all be, have to be set back, you know, quite a bit further. Um, the, the upland area, you know, might, will probably be the same, but, um, everything would have to, you know, have different setbacks. So, um, it would be, um, you know, different as far as the geometry of, of what's, what's on the, the lots. Um, and I guess someone heard, like, wood frogs out there, and that's why, you know, there was a thought about the possibility of a vernal pool. Um, the, the water department, um, doesn't feel that a loop is required. Uh, the fire chief, um, the deputy fire chief, I met with, um, with Jeff, and, um, you know, we had some good discussion, and in the end, they approved the plan with the 14-foot width, um, going, you know, the whole length of the driveway, um, up, you know, towards the houses beyond where it, it cuts off. Um, there are gonna be three entrances off Dreamwald Road fairly close together. There'll be this common driveway, then Lot 1, and then Kobe's Run, um, the small subdivision that, um, John Tedeschi built, which is, you know, right a little bit, um, just, I don't know how many feet away, but, um, maybe like less than 100 feet away from, um, from the lot line, uh, maybe 50 feet from the lot line. Um, so it's very close to the lot line for Lot 1. Um, it's not an ideal situation, but probably traffic will be going pretty slowly around that turn because it's such a sharp turn. Um, you know, if you really wanted to, you could push for Lot 1 to come off the common driveway, but they would need to get a variance to do that, so that would, you know, kind of, um, add something to what they needed to do. Um, you know, just kind of, you know, leave that with the board, whatever, uh, you all think. Because it took such a long time to get the vernal pool issue worked out, um, and we were trying to coordinate that with, with John, um, John, you know, we were waiting on, on sending the plans to John until that was a little bit more determined. Um, so when John got the plans, there was time to get the response back, but not time to have the, um, you know, the response back from the, the applicant's engineer. So there are some things that, that they have to respond to. Um, I believe there was some, um, some off-site drainage that had to be included in some of the watersheds and, um, and some other, um, issues that, you know, John can talk to. So, that's, uh, that's that part of it, and, you know, John can talk about, um, somewhere.
Sure. Um, and I didn't do it with my letter, but I have, did make a little cheat sheet, well, hand it out just to make life easier.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And, um, I hadn't heard the latest on the fire chief, this last email I saw, that there was an issue, so I checked that, and, like, they sort of divided it based on the common drive. Okay. Apparently, how's it drinking? It's a beautiful...
Let's go ahead.
All right. Um, I can use my end of that too. Okay, so, under the common drive, uh, just, just a couple of things. The easement line is inconsistent between the A&R and the common drive plan. I'm not sure which one came first. I think the A&R plan looks probably what you want, because on the common drive plan, there's a septic system in the easement. I don't know that that's something that the board would want. Um, the next one is, I think you need to review the maintenance agreement. Um, there's a bunch to maintain. There's drainage, there's private on-lot sort of dry well or, you know, roof systems, how that gets taken care of. Then there's the common drive, then there's some drainage that's sort of associated with the common drive, and then there's a rain garden that's specifically on one lot. It gets complicated how that all works. There's no easement for some of the private things, and all I know is in past experience from projects I've worked on, somebody built a nice rain garden in one of the back of the house in Norwell, and then they go to get their ass built on the person that bought the house, build it in. You know, it's like this, they had to have pretty strong agreement to make sure, because if somebody, like, might wanna put a pool, then all of a sudden, what's this hole in the ground with these bushes? I don't want that. There's no easement to protect it. You might lose it. I don't think about it. Um, and relative to the utility services, I just have a question, and then maybe they can clarify it pretty simply, but the plans show a couple of things. One, the water line, the new water service to the proposed, or not the existing house, goes right through a whole bunch of those trees that they're trying to save, so that just doesn't seem to make any sense. It's like a ring of cedar trees in front of the house. If you put the water line through it, you're gonna damage those. That's probably an easy thing to do. Well, the next one is, right, it doesn't show on the plan that there's an overhead wire with an on-lot utility, actually two, but one of them's not active, utility pole. Is it gonna remain overhead to that house and underground to the other? Or if you do it underground, you're gonna pull it underground to that one as part of the process? Doesn't really show new service to the existing house. I'm not, I'm not sure what the board wants to happen with that or what's required. I'm just bringing it up as something to discuss. Um, and, so I can go through some of my, you know, I have issues on the stormwater warrant here, so first concern I have is that, now this is the plan, too. So right here, there's a berm. So all this is gonna run along the berm and then dump right here at one point. I think that's gonna be an issue, because you'll have erosion down there with that much water from this driveway, this driveway, and all that running down here, all concentrated at one point. Um, so I may need to do something other than that. Um, the other thing, there's a, there's ways, there's a pipe here that does connect to this catch basin, but when you look at the pipe angles and it shows on the plan, it doesn't show the line connecting, but, but it shows there's the pipe going at this angle from here, and this angle from here, so there's might be something in between. I think you want that to be investigated, and the DPW should, maybe they already have, I haven't seen their comments, maybe they're okay with that connection, but right now, you get this pipe, this pipe, and then another pipe in. It might be better to find out if there's something in the middle and maybe connect that, somehow maybe upgrade that piece, that last piece or something, but, um, something's a little funky over there. And relative to this, there's some discrepancies in the runoff sub-areas. In particular, this lot comes into the site, so even though it's in existing condition, you need to accommodate it flow-through, so that the, there's a stone wall here, and when I looked at it, it does look like most of this actually goes along the stone wall and around, because the stone, most stone walls actually tend to be a little bit higher than the area around them, because they collect stuff. But in this case, it does come in. And, and actually, the other side, it looks like it runs along the lot line in this area, too. There's mounted septics, but the back of them seems to come down just a little bit. There's a sto, there's a stone wall on a portion of this as well. So it's only this area in here, I'm not sure how far over it goes specifically, but, you know, they can kind of look at it and keep it, right? Um, and then there's a few other, well, it looks like this driveway, actually, when you look at it, this is very rutted, and right now, it, from about here, it runs down the driveway, corner of the garage, just a couple little things like that, but that's, you know, minor stuff. Um, and this is something, I guess, the board, and you need to, under the subdivision, they're actually supposed to do a maximum build-out. I mean, in this one, they're proposing, I mean, it's a good idea if you can. I mean, there's woods proposed in the back here, but there's nothing to keep somebody from clearing it. It's not like it's a dense forest either. You know, whoever lived, they didn't come in and do some stuff. This house is pretty small compared to what you usually see on a high and tall, so those are, and it does say in the stormwater, like, something about, you know, what is, uh, what's proposed. Anything down here, nobody's gonna go down, and that's a buffer zone for much of it. Common drive with an easement, I don't think anybody's gonna steep slope, nobody's gonna clear that, and that makes sense, but maybe around there in the back, you don't know. Um, I recommend that the TC calculations use, utilize the data in HyperCAD for woods and various surfaces rather than just unpaved. That's kind of technical, but unpaved means anything from a thick, you know, leaf litter-covered forest to gravel, that's unpaved. And they have, the program has the capability to use, utilize different things. Um, DEP, if you read their handbook, does not, when you look at rain gardens, rain gardens aren't for rate control, they're a treatment system. Now, I know that everybody likes rain gardens, but that's not what they were made for, they were made for treatment, not for runoff control of rate for 100-year storm. They're, they're little, and they have little, so that's something, I mean, I'm just telling you what DEP, the way it reads, that's what it says. The other thing is, there's no soil testing for any of the systems. None of it, I mean, there's been some testing done, you can't tell which is which, because they're not labeled on the plan, the numbers, but there's been testing done mostly for the septic. And according to the soil map, what you have is, where this house is existing, is a decent soil, but like, there's, there's a poorer soil per the soil map that kind of comes like this around. So the septics are in the better soil, but all the drainage is in what's been mapped as the poorer soil. We don't know how accurate that line is. Usually, it's, you know, it moves a little bit, but Norwell soils are listed soil, which is a high-water table, poor soil. The other soil is actually a pretty decent soil where it perked. They didn't get awesome perke rates, but they were, they were decent. I think it was like 20 minutes an inch or something, right?
It was about there. I don't remember the exact number.
And maybe it's, the line's off on the soil map, but there's no testing. You have to have testing. Next one, street sweeping wasn't listed in O&M, and it's a discretionary credit. I mean, something like this, how many times do you think they're gonna actually sweep by a common drive? It's a pretty rigorous program to get credit. You gotta sweep it, like, monthly, and I, I don't know that that's a realistic thing. I don't know that they would, you know, it gives you, like, five, five to 10%, if you can get it done that often. I don't know that anybody will. Storm scepter, which is proposed at the front, see, if you did a study of these proprietary systems, they would do that at 30% rate, they would do it at like an 87% rate. I tend to go with the, I can give you the link to that if you'd like. Um, there's no plantings proposed, you know, they didn't list any of the plantings in the rain garden. There's a few other, you know, I'm not gonna listen every time, everything, but the rain gardens definitely need some effort, uh, relative to compliance and everything. They, I think they should have a plan view of the erosion control plan for this. It's got, there's, there's a little write-up, but there's no plan. And the, um, the next one is, there's some, I think there's some minor things to the O&M plan that should be done to be consistent with the requirements, and then the board should obviously review all the, there's a lot of easements, there's a lot of things that go along with these type of projects, so, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Jeff. And these are, these are all comments that you'll be looking at and addressing in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah. We'll submit revised plans in a letter addressing them.
Uh, comments from the board?
Richard? I would just say that I'm, I'm a big visual person, so I'm a proponent of the underground utilities for the existing, um, dwelling. Go on record by that, I would prefer that, pretty since you're doing the underground utilities, as John had said, to the other two proposed, um, dwellings. I think to have the existing dwelling be underground, uh, utilities would be nice. Um, do you know that... Do you know, what's the width of Dreamwald Road? I mean, it says here a 40-foot wide, that's the right of way though, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, that's a very narrow road, right?
Yeah, it's a pretty narrow road.
And, I guess this is more a question for Laura. It's public, right?
No. Ah, I believe so. Yeah, do you know?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. Yeah, I, I don't know what the board feels about, like, I'm looking at the, I know that Kobe's Run and the existing driveway, and there are like, that will be like three curb cuts right there, pretty close. So, depending on what the board feels, I might think that, I, I'm kind of six to one, half dozen to the other to like have Lot 1 come off of the driveway, but, I don't know. The, the common driveway. I could, I could see it both ways, but that's the only concern, is to have those three curb cuts all within a short period or short distance, and that is such a, a really, kind of a hairpin curve right there. And the, the street's really in poor condition, if I remember right.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's, at least, you know, I'll, I'll leave it to John for the, all the drainage conditions, but that's all I really wanted to say.
Robert?
Yeah, I mean, my instinct is a little bit like Richard's in terms of the access points being close together. But four houses on a single common driveway seems to me to be pushing the envelope a little bit in terms of congestion, traffic, possible conflicts, that sort of thing. So, I guess I might leave that to someone else to decide. Who else would decide that? Would the police want to input on that? Would the DPW want to input on that?
We distribute these plans to all of the above.
Right.
So, I mean, one other thing that I was thinking of, and I'm not sure exactly what the standard would be, but maybe some type of signage on Dreamwald Road, you know, vehicles entering right, you know, multiple driveways. I, I don't know what.
Yeah, well.
Signs you can have.
Well, even having like the, I know on a lot of driveways where they have the multiple street, or the multiple addresses is nice, because then you know right away, like a perfect example, I think, is Watch Hill, since we're talking about that. There's a common driveway there, but it's nicely labeled, all three, you know, it's like, whatever the numbers are, 32, 33, 34. So something like that where people know that there are three homes there would be.
Yeah, I think for identification, you have to do that as part of the, the DPW and Fire Department requirements. Laura, there are no regulations about the distance between curb cuts in a situation like this?
For subdivisions, but not for common driveways.
Okay, okay.
But, it's interesting.
But, like in this case?
Yeah, it's because Kobe's Run is a subdivision, so.
Right. And then you've got, so you've got a, a common driveway, but then you have a regular driveway, right? Whatever we call that, just a driveway.
Then you have a subdivision.
Then you have a subdivision. So is there any kind of?
And how close are the three of them? Because I'm assuming this one little section is where the curb cut for Lot 1 would be.
Yeah, they're not showing it.
Would have to be, yeah.
I was kind of looking at this, so that would be right here, and then there's Kobe's Run right there. There isn't even a lot.
So, on center from.
There's a little bit of an offset.
Existing driveway that we're using for a common driveway, to the center of Kobe's Run is about 110 feet. This is something we did talk about before the meeting, because Laura had mentioned it to me the other day. And, the, the trust would prefer not to keep, well, they prefer to keep Lot 1 independent because that way they can sell that lot separately. They don't have to wait till the common driveway is constructed, they can unload that, and somebody can build a house there. As far as an engineering perspective, I'm not, well, I'm always concerned about safety, but I think it will create a safe situation with the low speeds. It's basically a dead end road, so you don't have cars coming around that corner very fast. We have the site distance calculations that are required for a common driveway, but if we have it for the common driveway, then obviously the driveway is gonna have the site distance as well.
It's on the good side of the curve, at least.
Yeah, true.
If it were.
If we wanted to access that lot off of the common driveway, we would have to get a variance from the ZBA. And I, I could see that being difficult. I don't see them wanting to set a precedent of allowing four lots off of a common driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I'm not.
I don't think they'd want to set that precedent either.
Well, I think it's something where, you know, to accommodate, you know, public safety needs, they, they might go in that direction in this one circumstance, because it is a unique, you know, a unique piece of property because of the site distance.
Close on it.
The subdivision rules and regulations do want streets entering on the same side of a minor street to be offset a minimum of 250 feet. So I don't think you have that between Kobe's Run and this common driveway.
No.
I mean, you can say, I guess, you could make the argument that this doesn't, you know, technically apply because this is not a subdivision, it is a common driveway. But it's something that, you know, you might want to take into consideration when you're thinking about it.
But you're not solving the problem really by, by putting four people onto the common driveway. You still don't have 250 feet.
No, but I think you have maybe a slight.
One less curb cut.
Aggressive situation than you otherwise would have.
But I, I think to this gentleman's point, it is a dead end. And it's a very, as you've also pointed out, it's a very narrow street. So it precludes anyone from speeding on it, and the chances of it being reconstructed anytime soon are slim and none. So, you know, it's a very rutted, difficult road that makes people slow down anyway. And as you've pointed out, Bob, it's on the correct side in terms of people will come down and turn up into it, and they'll have decent site distances. It's not as if we're putting all of these curb cuts, one after another, on First Parish Road. That's a little bit different because of, it's more of a major.
Oh, absolutely.
And if I'm not mistaken, doesn't the road, as you continue around, like, let's say you go just past Kobe's Run, like it dead ends, right?
Yes.
So you can't really go anywhere.
This is not a throughway. This is not in any shape or form a throughway. And there's only two or three houses beyond Kobe's Run.
Yeah.
And it's a total and complete, nobody has any business other than living there or making a delivery to go down that road. So, I mean, I don't, I for one, don't have a problem with it. It's, I know it's 250, 200 feet, Laura?
250.
250. And in a way, that's sort of unrealistic. But I look at some of these houses that have been built behind houses with curb cuts that come down onto First Parish Road, and they're not 250 feet apart. There's no way that's happening. So I think that, let's be real about this.
Well, this, this is a distance from a subdivision right there.
Yeah.
Right.
From a, from a road to, to another run.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else, Bob?
No, but.
Bob?
No, that, that was my concern, and we've discussed that quite a bit.
Okay. Yeah?
Well, that was my concern. I still, as I said before, and these are formais, I can, you know, wonder about whether their frontage is illusionary or not, but you've already decided that. And with the common driveway, I guess that resolves the issue. I think too that all of the utilities should be underground. And that somehow, some way, of the water pipe, as Mr. Chessey pointed out, to the existing house should be done in such a way that the trees are kept. So, I mean, these are, they're little picky things, but aesthetically, I think it's important.
And I think there's a, this, a significant list of things that Mr. Chessey has pointed out need to be addressed as well.
Yes, absolutely.
I think the easements are important too.
Yeah.
Because I mean, that is something that I can imagine happening quite easily, like someone just filling it in because they just want to.
And it has happened. It has happened.
Oh, sure.
Yep, it's happened.
So I think it would be in their best interest to make sure that those are, are outlined in that way.
I think it needs to be in the deed.
Yeah, I have a question on that. If it's on private property and it's part of the overall stormwater management system, it's, shouldn't it be the responsibility of the owner of that particular property as opposed to the homeowners association?
Yeah, I think it would be, but I think he still might want to protect that in an easement so that it couldn't be destroyed or filled in.
Right.
Some of these things overlap property lines, right?
Registered as part of the deed. So, the approval that we're talking about tonight is simply for the driveway. It's not for any other aspect of this division of property or location of homes or whatever.
It's the driveway and the drainage and.
So it's for the entire site plan that we're, that we're looking at in front of us? Okay.
But we're not voting on that tonight, are we? Is this going to be?
No, we're not gonna vote on, on any of it, I'm sure.
Right.
I think this was explained then, but I'm, I'm gonna ask again. The small piece of land that's going from the original Fippen property to the southern parcel boundary, what, what exactly is that?
That right here.
It had to do with a zoning requirement. I think it was if there are two 50-foot, if there are two retreat lots abutting each other with a common lot line, then they have to be serviced from a common driveway, which Lot 1 is not serviced by the common driveway, so that strip separates them.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
I guess. Is Lot 1, is Lot 1 considered a retreat lot?
It's a 50-foot frontage.
Because it doesn't have a 100-foot frontage.
Yeah, the zoning requirement's 20,000 square feet, so that has the 40,000, and it's technically a 50-foot frontage lot.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Questions from the public?
Dana Harwood, 32 Dreamwald Road, directly across street from Lot 1. My question is on the driveway. Between Mrs. Fippen's driveway and Kobe's Run, there's a fire hydrant and storm grain and a really nice tree that will give us the only privacy possible from the house that's gonna be built there. Why can't we run the driveway up from Kobe's Run into Lot 1?
Don't.
What's private?
Kobe's Run is private.
I know, but why can't we get an easement from those folks?
You would need cooperation from the owners of Kobe's Run.
So, I, I'm not following where this area is you're talking about. Could you, could you just point it out?
Yeah.
We have actually a plan with Kobe's Run attached to it.
So.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Lot 1, Kobe's Run's right here. So right in here, storm grain, fire hydrant, tree, this is my lot right here. I want to put a way to access it from this side rather than from putting it all right here.
Take out the tree.
In the middle of the lot. Take a tree out, take a fire down, move in the storm grain, all that other stuff. But also, any car coming out of here is gonna shine a light right in my house every time they come in and go. It's bad enough with Kobe's Run, which is relatively near.
Yeah, did you say?
I mean, it's certainly a good idea in terms of planning, but it's probably a tough, tough trip.
Well, and as, as you go on Kobe's Run.
Real estate transactions wise.
Isn't there like a fence on the right-hand side now?
No, there's nothing there.
Oh, okay.
There's a little bit of.
So this is Lot 1 right up to Kobe's Run right here.
Looks like you were thinking about maybe moving that hydrant and replacing it somewhere else if there's a, oh, no, that was on the note for.
No, the, no, we're, we're not going to move the existing hydrant.
Okay, so there's a water quality swell that you'd have to interdict, so that's gonna screw, screw up something, I'm sure. I mean, just. No, it's, 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 it's a good, it's a good planning idea, but I can see it would be difficult to pull off and, you know, you're really dependent on the cooperation of the homeowners association of Kobe's Run. I mean, if that were.
That could be accomplished.
That could be accomplished easily, yeah.
Right, but.
Yeah, right.
This lot already exists, right? Lot 1 already exists on the A and R? Yeah.
And were you proposing to remove that tree? You said you weren't gonna remove the hydrant.
Right.
Tree, that one with the tree.
That would, that would depend on whoever buys Lot 1, whether they can maneuver their driveway and utilities around that tree or not. They, they have 50 feet of frontage. If there's a tree and a hydrant, I would think you could avoid them, but I haven't located that tree and, and who knows.
They're pretty close together.
All right.
It's conceivable that you could get it in there between the catch basin and hydrant. How close is the tree to the hydrant?
Pretty close. Like, it's right behind it.
Okay, so, just looking at this, it seems like you've got a fair chance of getting, getting in there. But it would mean that you'd offset the drive to the left-hand portion of that 50-foot frontage over towards the catch basin, and that would put it even closer to the common driveway.
No, it's over this side.
Oh.
It'd be on this, on a, on the west corner. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd have to be over here.
So it'd be closer to the common driveway.
Yeah, really close to that one.
Right. To make that happen. I, I, I still like the idea. I hate cutting down big trees. This isn't by any chance a scenic road?
No.
Just, just asking.
Sorry.
Well, it's a good idea, so I can tell you.
It would take a lot of coordination.
It would take a lot of coordination.
Did you, had, had you ever approached Kobe's Run about access on that side?
No, I haven't personally. I, I agree, I like the idea, but it would be very difficult. You'd have to make an agreement with the owner of that property. And being a private driveway, you might have to have approval from everyone who has an ownership in the driveway. I'm not really, you'd have to look into that.
I would think, yeah, you would.
It could always happen in the future. I mean, that lot is a more valuable, I would think, coming off of Kobe's Run, so maybe someone would look into it in the future and do, buy that piece of land and come off of Kobe's Run. But for right now, I mean, we're just working for the trust, who doesn't own that piece of land. Yeah, yeah, true.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the comment.
I'm sure that you'd have to have all the mortgage companies sign off, have all the mortgages on the properties that are in Kobe's Run. And I think when the planning board approved that plan, because the road is extremely narrow on Kobe's Run.
Right.
It's probably restricted the amount of lots that access it now. So you'd have to modify the whole subdivision in Kobe's Run or it come in that way. It's just really different.
Be a mess.
Well, and also, I would say, there's that house right across the street that's not shown on the plan. It's like that, the existing house before you go on Kobe's Run. So if you came off that way, like, you'd be coming kind of almost toward that house. Like, they may not like that either.
Yeah, I just, I, it's hard to imagine all of the things that you would need to do in order to make that actually happen.
Easier subdivision, a connection there.
Yeah.
I think there is a swell on that side of Kobe's Run, and you'd have to rearrange the drainage over there.
Right, right. It's part of their stormwater management system runs there.
So the board's still feeling like the, the two driveways are a better option?
I do.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't know, I mean, what, the point this gentleman just made is seems to be arguing against, you know, the two, the two driveways in that location, it might be better to adjust the single curb cut, leave the screening along the road as it is.
Oh, I think, I think he, the gentleman was saying that what he doesn't want is to lose that tree.
Right.
Well, that's the only thing that would block us from the house.
Right. So if there's any, the bottom line is, save the tree.
Well, the other thing is that if you've got the driveway going into the common driveway, that headlight path is not going to be directed at your house.
Right, that's true.
Well, the, the board has approved common driveways before with conditions that say that if possible, this tree will be saved. It doesn't guarantee it, but you can certainly encourage the, the location of the driveway in such a way to preserve the tree. such a way to preserve the tree.
Right, but this is a lot that won't be tied into the common driveways. This is a separate lot.
That's true.
It's a lot that you would intend to just sell off and have no control over of any kind, right?
Right, exactly.
The other advantage or mitigating circumstance in my mind is that this lot where it ties in would only utilize, what, the last 50 feet of the common driveway. It's not like the traffic from this lot is traversing the entire drive. It's not.
Yeah, it's actually a pretty easy shot there, right?
Right.
But it would require zoning board? So the three houses, right?
Yeah. Although, sometimes I hear that special permits can be somewhat flexible. I don't know if Neil would flex that far. It's flexing pretty far to do that.
I mean, it.
And I'm sorry, is it Dana?
Yes.
Okay, so when the current driveway right now, which is there, when they pull out, or, like, are those headlights shining on your house?
No, because it's right at the edge of our property line where it comes down. It's across the street, obviously, but it's not, it's never been a problem. And at the end of the driveway, it actually kind of angles to the left a little bit as you're coming out, so the headlights really don't even hit us.
Yeah, so they end up pointing out a little differently.
Okay.
Do you think it's a dangerous precedent to set if we recommended that, Laura?
No, I don't think anything really sets a precedent, because each of these is done on a case-by-case basis. And I think you explained why in your motion or in your suggestion.
Yeah, I'm sort of leaning that way.
Yeah. What does that do to the sort of the drainage systems and all of that if you connect in the fourth, you know, kind of the other lot?
Well, right now, Lot 1 is not included in the stormwater calculations. It's down gradient of the area we studied, so that would have a separate stormwater application coming before you. So we'd totally change it. I mean, Lot 1 is not part of this common driveway application. We're only looking at lots 2, 3, and 4. That's an A and R lot that was, that's been endorsed.
Yeah.
In 50 feet, if we're worried about losing a tree, I have not located that tree. If it's right behind a hydrant and the only things we need to avoid are hydrant and tree, I would think we can get the 12-foot driveway around it.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I'm sure you can.
Well, they wouldn't be, right? This would be, somebody else would be doing this, right?
It would be, yes.
They'd have to come for a.
Well, it would be a stormwater permit.
Stormwater, maybe.
And all the others will be notified again at that point.
No, others have.
For stormwater? Oh, I'm sorry.
Greg had something to input. Greg, did you have something to add?
Yes, I did. Greg Morrison, I just wanted to say, yeah, Lot 1 is not part of this. It's a fully compliant A and R lot, and to ask us to go to the ZBA, the first test that you have to pass to be granted a variance is that the lot has to have one of three things. It has to be either unique shape, topography, or soils. This lot would not meet the first test of getting a variance, because how is this lot unique in relation to shape? It's a fully compliant lot. It's a lot that the ZBA has endorsed, it's a lot that you've endorsed. The soils, there's nothing here unique with the soils. Topography, it's the same topography as the lots around it. It wouldn't meet that first test. You wouldn't get a variance in this case, and that's what would be required to do what you're talking about.
That's a very good point.
Any other comments from the questions, comments from the public?
I have a, I know it's probably a stupid question, but let's just assume that the current three-lot common driveway gets approved. Could the person on Lot 1, let's say they buy it later on, could they ever amend and tie into that, or is that just like impossible?
Usually you condition common driveways to prevent that. That's usually what you, that's what your precedent has been.
So 3 is.
It's all the same problem.
Right.
That you can only have three lots, so they'd be prevented.
Okay. All right, all right.
That's not necessarily true. Steve Bjorkland, if I could answer that. You could go to town meeting and have the common driveway by law changed to allow four houses on a common driveway instead of three.
Well, I don't, that's a really slippery slope, I think.
But you asked if it could be done, and yes, the planning board could actually change it to four lots instead of three.
Well, yeah, I wasn't by any means.
I don't think we're prepared.
Yeah.
Is this a precedent?
Yeah, suggesting that.
You don't want to help there?
Yeah, I was just.
Great idea.
I was just saying, in this particular case, after the fact, could the person on Lot 1, you know, go for some variance or something? So it sounds like the answer is no.
There wouldn't be much incentive to do that for that, for the owner of Lot 1.
No, I don't know why we would, you know, sort of arbitrarily change it at this point, right?
No, I think that is a truly slippery slope.
Okay, so where are we at this point? At this point, we're at a place where we need a continuance, because we need these other issues addressed, right?
Yeah, I guess the question is, how long do you think it will take you to respond to John's comments, given that he's got to review them and then we've got to get all of that tied up a week before the planning board needs?
I would think if you gave us two weeks to reply, that would be more than enough.
Okay, so that would put this on the meeting of June 11.
June 11, okay.
Is 7:45? Well, first of all, the first item on June 11 is the signs at the Harbor Medical Building. So how long do you think you all want to talk about those? 15 minutes, a half hour, 20 minutes?
I would think if the design review committee has agreed essentially with what we've been talking about previously, it wouldn't take more than 15 minutes.
Yeah, I would say 15, 20, yeah. Yeah.
20.
20, okay.
Yeah. Give ourselves a little float there.
Okay, so.
So this would be at 7:50 on.
Requesting a continuance? Yeah, okay, great.
Do we have a motion?
Okay. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the common driveway special permit for 35 Dreamwald Road until June 11, 2015, at 7:50, 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And went right on time.
Somehow we can put in, like, when they, remember when they come back with the condition to try to save that tree?
Yeah, and we're done.
Laura said that there's.
It's a private.
Well, that's actually on the other lot, so it's on the other lot, so the only thing we can do is ask them to maybe condition the sale of the lot to something. Because as Greg said, it's a fully conform lot, it's available, it's available for sale.
Again, I mean, on the corner, they're going to want.
So I don't know that there's anything we really can do, right? I mean, the common sense thing says tied into the common driveway, make it easier. I understand that we have to recalculate or do everything.
Coming around here.
Becomes a variance issue.
These houses are all going to be up here. My house is going to be here, so they're going to want us to.
If this house is on, who's going to help you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think I, what to do about? Oh, my goodness, this would be fun.
Good, how are you, so. What department's supposed to give you a call when she lands and so?
Yeah.
It's off to be, um, doing a. I never thought that was going to go down. Oh, yeah. She's landing here tonight. Well, you wouldn't, jeopardy. Anyway, when I say who is, it's certain credibility.
Is this going to be current?
I don't mind.
We haven't found one yet. Nonetheless, six and a half years.
Give you a minute to set up here, all right?
Thank you.
We just got a piece of court started from the initial dispossessment. This is, came in about 7:30. I'm already in here.
Talked about cutting this. Fine.
Okay, oh, we're all set to go.
Great.
Good. This is the continued public hearing for the site plan administrative review of 46 Watch Hill Drive, and I guess the proponents are here, and can you introduce yourself and whoever your team is, and then we'll let you have the floor.
Thank you. So my name is Paul Worthington Berry, and I'm with Beadham and Architects, the architects hired, designed, proposed, classed, and auditioned for the Inlay School. This is Sean Malone. He's our consultant and civil engineer. Rob Marco, he's chair of the master planning committee at Inlay School. This is Steve Zdularski. He is the project manager for, no, I'm sorry.
Scott Henderson.
Scott Henderson. He's with the engineering firm that is associated with the athletic field that has some work done previously. So I think everybody's generally familiar with the project, and I'll just go through quickly to describe it. The existing campus contains several properties that have been built or bought together. They include a middle school, which is close to the main road. It has a toddler school, which is close to the end of the Watch Hill Drive. It has a big building, which is a combination of several buildings put together over time that is considered the main building. This white roof is a modular classroom building that was installed several years back, and then there's a bridge or a ramp that takes you to a more recent building called the art barn, which houses the gymnasium and the theater program enrollment. So the problem is that these modular classrooms that are in the middle of the campus, the classroom spaces are fairly small. They are not what we might consider today to be healthy classroom environments, and I believe there's actually some structural issues associated with that. So in response to that, we've been asked to come in and design a more modern school that has a more healthy classroom environment for the kids. Bigger classroom spaces, more program elements, although we're very careful not to increase the student population. So for example, even though we are building, I believe, an additional classroom, we are not saying that we're housing additional kids in the school. Rather, that classroom allows the bubble effect of the student population as they pass through grade to be more easily and flexibly accommodated. So somebody, so you can see here that the existing art barn is going to be designated to remain. The main classroom building is also going to be remaining, and we're taking out these modular classrooms and the ramp that connects to the art barn. So in this place, in a place of modular classrooms, we are going to provide some new updated classroom spaces. There's going to be a full of six classrooms, which I said is four is one more than what we're taking away. Classes are larger in size, and we're also providing a circular building that houses a library on the top floor and a couple of program elements on the bottom floor. These elements are the makerspace, which is kind of a creative room that kids can be given a challenge and find some creative way in building a model or something that responds to that challenge. Then the other thing they're doing is a robotics lab, and we're also providing some meeting spaces as well. So here, you get kind of a before and after effect of how the building's going to look. You can see the modular classrooms here that are going to be taken down. You can see the existing art barn here. You can see the existing stairs leading up to that, so the faces are up front. And off to the side, you can notice that there's the existing visitors entrance and the existing student entrance. Both of those entrances are right now accessible. We're going to keep those for future use, so we're not taking those away. In place of the modular classrooms, we're going to build primarily a circular-shaped building. Again, there's a lot of, a lot of good thoughts about how the art barn, the idea of the barn kind of relates to the school as a whole, with the fact that they have these, these plastic cows that are scattered all over the site. So there's kind of an agricultural theme that's going on. So we looked at ideas about making this classroom space also a barn, but what you end up with is two barns side by side that kind of compete with each other, and it doesn't really work at any level. So then what we decided to do was to do a shaker barn, a round shaker barn that you see in New England quite often. So that's what this building here is. So again, the top floor with clear story windows is the library. The bottom floor that you see here is the makerspace and also the robotics lab. Here's the plan in a little greater detail. You can see we're taking advantage of the existing visitors entrance and student entrance. That's part of the accessible path that leads you into the building, to an elevator, up to some flights, up to a landing that has an accessible ramp that leads you through the building and connects you to the art barn. So the idea that the existing site is fairly challenging in terms of the amount of topography that you have to cover in order to get from one side of the building to the other. So we're making an effort to use the elevator and accessible ramp to make an accessible path on one side of the building to the other.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut your presentation short here, but we saw, we saw a fair amount of this already, and I thought it might be good if, you know, you could summarize whatever you need to in the next minute or two, and then we could talk about what has changed, what's been addressed, what are the issues from the last meeting?
So obviously, there have been a couple of issues that I approached from the last meeting and addressed the major ones. The biggest change occurred in the site plan. The previous site plan that we showed had 11 parking spaces here that included two handicap spaces and nine additional parking spaces. After conversation with the neighbors, we reduced this just to the minimal two handicap parking spaces. We're also showing a turnaround here, so there will be signage indicating handicap spaces, and there'll be no parking sign located in the turnaround areas so people don't have to park there, and there'll be signage at the entrance into that parking lot designated as a handicap parking space. During our last meeting, we had taken some real estate of a parking lot. We had taken away four parking spaces so we could accommodate some detention ponds. That's been re-engineered, so now these four parking spaces are coming back into the plan. We've enlarged here, an existing detention pond has been enlarged so they can handle more detention in the system. In addition, we've added a dry well to help the drainage off the existing art barn. So again, we're trying to capture all water retention located right here. Let's see. We are providing a greater density of plant screenings along Watch Hill Drive. There used to be a scattering of trees located here, so now we're introducing kind of a thick barrier, if you will, for sightlines, so to kind of shield the art barn from the neighborhood. We're also providing some plantings along the back of the building where the mechanical equipment is going to be, the condensers to the AC equipment, so we're going to provide some planting there. Also provide some plantings as required around the existing transformer that's located in front of the building. And then, in addition to that, we are providing a new burn that runs along the property line between the school and Simmons Greenhouse, so this we can further prevent any runoff into that property. So we're maintaining it under our own site. During our last meeting, or before our last meeting, we met with the design review board, and they reviewed the plans, were generally agreement, they offered some suggestions, for example, providing some stone facing on the exterior concrete walls, which we're doing, the plantings, which I've already suggested, making sure that any new signage we provide matches the existing signage, which is on site, something that's already been thought out, so we want to keep that going. And then during that design review committee, they noticed that the porch is not, did not have an accessible path onto or off of, so, and I believe the planning board has continued that theme, so they have asked us to meet with the Towns Commission on Disabilities. So they have asked us to meet with the Towns Commission on Disabilities to get their feedback on that. So we did meet with them. I sent some drawings off to John McLaughlin, chair of the committee. And I invited him to give me some response. He, in turn, suggested that we actually meet onsite to review the existing conditions and also talk about the proposed building in more detail. Laura, you had the opportunity to join us for that meeting. So we discussed the idea of the porch. How it's a non-program space and the only door that is on there is going to be for exit only, not at entrance. We have signage stating such. So John took that back to the rest of the committee for discussion. We also talked about the idea of providing handicap parking spaces up here so that you could have accessible parking spaces immediately accessible to the entrance of the art barn. And also you can have space for ambulances and things like that to have more easy access to the art barn. So John took those back to his commission for discussion. There was a meeting that occurred last night that I participated in. We had a discussion. The committee agreed with our understanding about the need to have handicap parking spaces up here next to the art barn. They decided to not vote on the idea about whether or not this porch did or did not need any accessibility to it. Instead, they've encouraged us to meet with the state's architectural access board, who manages that for the entire state, to get their opinion about whether we do or do not need a waiver in order to have this proposed design meet the requirements. So that occurred last night. We were preparing to make that conversation start probably tomorrow. Again, we've, for various reasons, we've met with the AAB on various topics. We find it very easy and very quick to work with, so we're welcome to do that again. Another thing that came up was that the idea that the new building addition got pretty close to the existing setback, granted. And that the roof overhang might encroach over the setback as allowed by the zone code, I believe it's 18 inches. In response to that, we've asked the contractor to go out and stake out where that setback actually is so that we can see it now in our design phase. If I were to modify the building now to it, I may actually, when it's actually built, I may realize that in fact I had six inches extra that would have made a big difference, right? So rather than designing it now to a problem that may or may not exist, we're going to find out what the effects are about that. And if it turns out that the building does get uncomfortably close, then we'll start making design decisions to accommodate that. But the intention is to solve that problem before it is built so that we don't have to come back for any variances. Last time I was here, there was a question pondered about where the contractors would do their parking. So I went back to the general contractor, the construction manager, and I've asked him to provide me with a logistic plan showing where the parking is going to be. And he came up with this, right, which I believe we submitted on and you probably have copies of. And it shows that we're going to have contractor parking over on Sunflower Hill, right? And it also shows some of the other logistics about where the trailer is going to be located, where the materials are going to be stored, where the dumpster is going to be, what the boundaries of the construction fencing are going to be so we can keep kids' access to the building while still making it safe for them. And then we also talked about some emergency exit points and entrance points into the fencing for emergencies. And then we also spoke about the approximate location of some temporary trailers. That's a little bit important because when the old delinquent trailers come down and a new construction occurs, there could be a time period where we're missing classrooms while school's in session. So there's been a couple of discussions. It hasn't been totally resolved. One idea is that we're going to take those existing classrooms temporarily, move them over here, someplace yet to be determined, right, based on the need, until construction is completed and then they'll go away and students will walk by the new construction. I think another issue that was raised was the idea about parking, especially for special events. So we've proposed this plan which shows that we provide accessible parking here. We're also suggesting permanent signage on the street that says no on-street parking beyond this point. That'll occur on the far side of the street. Again, we're going to have signs that say no on-street parking on this side of the street. We're going to use Sunflower Hill for special overflow parking. We're going to use a new middle school property to also accommodate some overflow parking. I know, for example, that there was a condition that occurred some years ago when schools before you, I believe, were building the art barn. And at that time, they said that they were going to do some offset parking and lessen the gap. But since that time, the school has purchased some additional properties, mainly this middle school property and also Sunflower Hill. So now it has that real estate, which is about five acres, that can be used for special overflow parking. Sorry, I think I've touched on all the major points. So I think another thing that came up was the idea that the neighbor who lives at the... who owns the property at Simmons Greenhouse noticed that there was some water runoff that occurred in his construction. And we've invited the engineers who's involved in that to kind of help discuss the remedy of that solution. So, may I go ahead?
Sure. For record, Scott Henderson with McKenzie Engineering Group. We were the engineers of record for the expansion of the existing field behind the school. As we discussed at the prior meeting, they expanded that field, constructed a two-to-one slope over the winter. It was not properly stabilized during construction and prior to vegetation growing on that slope, there were some washout erosion issues. We met with Laura and the town's engineering consultant, Josh from Merrill Engineering, and we reviewed the condition of the slope a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago. We put down judenettings, stabilized that slope. We came up with a detailed long-term and construction period operation maintenance plan with provisions for dealing with any erosion if that occurs in the future. And since that time, the slope has been hydroceded. I actually have a couple of pictures. I'd like to just circle it to the board. It'll be greeny, but you get the idea. There's plenty of green there. It's maybe a week's worth of growth. What was put down on that slope was an erosion control grass mix. It's a tall growing wild seed mix, sort of like a fescue. It's cool weather, stable, so it stays dormant during cool weather and the roots stay fairly strong to prevent erosion in the early spring season before that green growth occurs. So we believe that we've addressed that issue to the maximum extent practicable. Right now, it looks like everything's stable. We have people on call at the school if there are any major rainstorms coming to make sure there are additional erosion control measures at the school available if you do have any erosion issue. And we foresee this being a non-issue in the forthcoming month or so once that grass grows in to be fully matured. So that's our update on that.
Okay. Is there any questions we might be able to help with?
Well, let's, let me turn it over to Laura first and get her input at this point and then we'll get to the board.
Okay, thanks. I'll try to break things down by accessibility, parking, landscaping and plantings, what happened to the old conditions that the planning board put on some of the other projects that have been improved on the site. And I'll just touch on the stormwater permit for the fields because I think that's been, you know, pretty well discussed and pretty well addressed. So with the accessibility, when I met with Paul and with John McLaughlin on the site, one of the things that we were talking about was having signage on those main doors that said something like exit only, you know, entrance to the right or have some direction to where the entrance actually was so that people would understand that wasn't an entrance. It sounds in this email from John McLaughlin that we just got that maybe he was envisioning trying to use that as an entrance with some variances, but I'm not sure I'm reading it right.
Right. The letter is a little bit different than my understanding of yesterday's meeting. But at the meeting yesterday, they decided to be supportive of the handicap parking spaces up here. Then in addition, they asked us to simply have a discussion with the architectural access board about this condition to get the understanding about whether or not a waiver will or will not be required.
Okay, well, that's great.
I don't believe that the Commission on the Disability felt that a waiver was required. They simply wanted us to kind of move up to the state level to ask the same question.
Well, I think it's great that that conversation is going to take place and I think that would be something that, you know, could be worked in with the conditions, whatever that decision is that comes out. On the parking, it's kind of a dilemma because the Inlee School has a great looking parking plan. Their point of view is that everything's working great. The neighborhood seems to have a very different point of view. We got the letter signed by the seven households saying that they have some serious problems continuing up there. When I asked about the parking conditions from the prior approvals, it sounded like the setup had changed a lot and it was too bad that the planning board was really never kept in the loop with what was going on. But, you know, be that as it may. So that was a bit of a, kind of a dilemma. And one of the other things that the planning board asked me to look at was the opinions of the police chief and the fire chief on the situation with the parking, both from the standpoint of traffic circulation and safety and also emergency access. And the police seemed to be pretty comfortable, more or less, with what was going on up there. But the fire chief said that it should probably really go to traffic rules and they should, you know, really vet the traffic issues with the neighborhood there and the principals from the school, you know, the engineer, whoever was going to be there from the school. So I thought that was interesting. It sounded like a good avenue to get this resolved. You know, it would be another meeting and it would, you know, take some additional time. I think anything that they would want would be kind of major to this application and it would be hard to approve this conditional on what comes out of that meeting.
Laura, can I add a few more comments?
I don't know, it's up to the chair.
Well, why don't we let Laura get through her sort of list of comments and then we'll come back.
Okay. So on the plantings, one of the things that some of the neighbors were concerned about was the 46 trees that were planted. And I did go up and identify, I don't know, it looked like about 35 birches and then, you know, maybe about 15 white pines. I mean, it looked like there was, you know, two different kinds of trees that had been planted, but, you know, a number of trees planted up there. It's not clear if any of those would have to be removed when the parking is put in, even though it's much smaller than what you originally proposed. And I would suggest that the planning board ask that, you know, those trees be identified and that, you know, they be replaced with, you know, obviously not the same age of tree, but some additional trees. And it sounds like maybe you're already going in that direction with a buffer. And Karen, who's a registered landscape architect, had a chance to look at the plans and she had some suggestions. One of those was to stagger the arborvitae so that they weren't, you know, completely in a like dead straight line. And the other was to have a, some kind of a softer looking shrub in front of the transformer to make it more, you know, a little bit more sort of, you know, like a more comfortable sort of appearance. So that was where we were with the landscaping. On the old conditions, some of those, I think we've kind of... I struggled at one point to try to get some of those things, but it was a little difficult getting the data consistently. I don't know, I think there might have been some changes in the business manager. I know Linda, someone named Linda was there for a while and I know there's somebody new now. But the Board of Health and the planning department are, neither of us is getting any information on the number of students. We were supposed to get that every year to check on the septic system and also to have a feeling that the parking was kind of status quo instead of having to accommodate additional parents and additional students. So I think some of the things that you mentioned about the parking, the signage about no on-street parking and, you know, beyond this point and no on-street parking on the opposite side of the street, sound very good. I think, you know, having the traffic rules look at that and having everybody hopefully come to some kind of agreement on that would be really, really positive. And finally, I think in addition to that, I think when you get this plan, you need to have something, and maybe you already do, but something going out to parents when you have these events, talking about how are you going to park? And some of the language is very sort of, you know, maybe a little bit overly gentle. It's like, well, you would please do this and please do that. I mean, it's very nice to have that kind of approach, but I think sometimes you have to say, you must not park on the neighbor's property. I mean, I think sometimes you really have to be a little more, you know, take a little bit more, you know, slightly different approach to it. So that's all I had. And I know Josh is here on the stormwater.
Mr. Pritchard, may I add a few more comments?
Yeah, let's, if you're addressing exactly what Laura already said. Well, Josh may have additional comments, so maybe we should let him get his comments in and then you can address them all at one time.
Thank you.
My name is Joshua Vos from Merrill Engineers and Land Spheres and we've reviewed a number of iterations on this project. I think in fact there were four different sets of revised plans that we reviewed. The latest set of revised plans essentially addressed all of our comments. There were a few outstanding items that I left in Laura's purview, such as the thing she's already discussed, the conditions of the permit, conditions of the permit, and another condition, suggested condition regarding drainage pipe beneath the building. But other than that, our comments have been addressed. Regarding the field, the expansion of the field and the erosion issue that occurred out there, as Scott mentioned, I met with Scott and Laura on the field. At that point, I requested an ASBIL plan of the field construction. I did receive that ASBIL plan, reviewed the ASBIL plan against the approved design plan and it matched up. So the field was constructed as designed. In that initial memo, in the initial memo, which was a review of their, of the erosion control management plan, operations management plan, I had a number of comments that I had suggested revisions to that operations and management plan to sort of create a form of a belt and suspenders approach to it since it was a sensitive issue. And, you know, we've been very lucky with the weather, but if we weren't so lucky with the weather, it would be something that I think would, you know, require constant attention. But so all of those comments were addressed in a revised operation management plan that was submitted and I reviewed. And I had sent staff an email, you know, letting her know, letting both staff know that I had reviewed the revised plan and addressed all my comments. So I think we're in good shape then.
Great, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. So Laura, I believe you had asked Donna Luther to articulate a few points and questions and she responded.
Sure, I did distribute that to the board.
I just want to highlight some of those points because I think they may respond to some of your questions. I spoke earlier about how the school has purchased additional property and now is using those property for overflow parking. It's true. I also understand that the school has an agreement with Steve Sweeney of Everblooming Thing for overflow parking and that the school does use van to transport people back and forth to that. The other thing is you mentioned that you don't have annual data in terms of the number of students at the school. And I see a comment here from Donna that says that they do send charts that record digital metrics of the septic capacity and the student numbers regularly to Jennifer Keefe, Director of Public Health.
I talked to her today and she said she had not received anything.
Sure. Well, Donna continues to say that she has copies of those reports and she's welcome to give copies to you if you'd like.
I have copies, remember.
Okay, great.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Let's get the board questions and comments and then we'll go to the public.
Well, my main questions were when I was looking, reviewing this plan, one of the overflow parking, I think you mentioned the current athletic field.
Yeah.
Is that really feasible? I mean, is there any access?
I believe historically that has been used for overflow parking. But according to this new parking plan that we are providing tonight, we are going to not use the athletic field, but rather we're going to use Sunflower Hill and we're going to use a grass lawn in front of the school. I mean, technically speaking, the parking up here damaged the grass likely?
I would think so, yeah. And the access to get to the field would be difficult, I would think. Because you'd have to go over the, you know, or the entrance would be further up than the curb cut.
It would manage to be somewhere around here.
Yeah.
You would manage it somewhere around here.
Yeah.
I don't know what the curb position would look like up there, but regardless, we're not planning to do that.
Okay. So right now, I just wanted to clarify that about just beyond where the curb cut is on Watch Hill, going to the handicap spaces, just beyond that, there would be a sign that would say, no parking beyond this point on either side. Is that correct?
Technically, that sign would be located in front of the handicap parking space, in about the approximate location where the existing mailboxes are now. So we're kind of using the existing mailboxes as kind of like a line. We're asking people to not go beyond that line with a permanent sign that reads, no-on-street parking beyond this point.
Okay. And then I believe there was also, when there are special events, there's a police detail or, and so that would be directing traffic basically up towards Sunflower Hill to park there?
I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed, when I walked up there, it seemed like it was pretty narrow. And when you say parking, like parking along that little round cul-de-sac?
Well, you can also park in the center of it, and you can also park around the edges of it. I'm not terribly clear how many parking spaces it could be accommodated up there, but.
Yeah, I was thinking there wouldn't be very many, at least from walking up there.
I mean, what would you consider to be not many?
Well.
I'm thinking probably about 20, 25 cars up there.
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, I was thinking more like Mr. Richards said about a dozen at the most. Because first of all, the driveway going up there is pretty steep. You have to get to the top of the hill, and then the turnaround is pretty narrow, basically.
I've attended meetings in this building. I've had attendees with cars, so I have seen easily a dozen cars parked up here in the space for more.
Okay. And then do you have an approximate of, you said the grass lawn in front of the middle school?
Right.
Do you know how many potentially?
All right, I don't know. I'm purely guessing. I'm thinking somewhere near maybe 40, 45 cars could park down there, maybe more.
And do you know, in the past, let's say, a few years, has the agreement with Every Blooming Thing been used? I mean, I've never.
I believe it has.
It has?
I believe so.
Actually, I'm not sure that it has. I think it's been a back-and-forth relationship, that they needed to park a few cars sometimes. I think they've come to Inlee. And then Donna has since, in speaking with Laura and understanding the demands of the neighborhood and the board, she has an agreement now that we'll be able to park cars over there, which is good news.
Also, I just want to articulate that I'm simply guessing at this moment, it's the number of cars that occur here. So I would need to carefully lay that out to understand what we'd be capable of there.
Well, I think, first off, I didn't say it at the beginning, but I think it's good that the applicant has listened to the residents of the neighborhood and at least tried to mitigate some of the issues or the problems there.
You might, sorry, you might remember that we tried to include a greater parking space up here.
Yes, yep.
To alleviate that same parking concerns.
Right, but then that was sort of encroaching on the neighborhood a little bit more. So again, I applaud the fact that you did try to mitigate and to compromise with the neighbors. And I think that having had the sign that says, no parking beyond this point, is critical there. So, yeah, my main concern right now is just the parking for the special events.
Sure.
And making sure that that's handled correctly and that it's not a burden on the neighborhood. So I'm not, I guess, 100% convinced yet, but I'm willing to listen.
Sure. So again, just to articulate some comments that Donna has provided in her letter, they have a parking procedures plan, which will be updated to include this. And that plan appears in the Inlee's parent handbook, so it's distributed to every parent. They review parking procedures with the students and parents at the annual back-to-school night that occurs in September, and it also is mentioned during written communications with parents.
Yeah.
That helps.
Okay. So that's, and I think, again, I applaud you for looking at the design review and also even going to the disabilities, the Committee on Disabilities, and getting all of this information. I think that was very good.
Everybody we've worked with so far has been a pleasure to be with.
So thank you. So no further questions.
Bill?
Yep, couple. One, thank you for going back and looking at the drainage on the field. I think that that was an important thing to at least, this is separate, but let's make it continue to be separate. I share Richard's concern over parking. I think he got a parking plan, but I don't get a sense of how big it is. Right? If I look at it, and let me pick on the Purple Dinosaur, which is a small little parking, a small little playground. And if I look at the number of cars that are there, they're randomly parked, but they take up a fair amount of space because they're SUVs and they're designed to pull out instead of back out.
Sure. Just so I clarify, you mentioned the playground, and I want to be clear that we are not using any playgrounds.
No, I understand. That's an example that people be familiar with. Because I guess I don't have a sense as to how many cars actually can be parked there, reasonably parked there.
Well, as you know, parking is an issue. I mean, to be fully compliant with the zoning requirements, you need 200 parking spaces. And there's just not that kind of real estate here that allows that to happen.
I understand that, but I think it behooves us to make sure that the spots that are designated are really meaningful. So if we say it's 25, it's 25, and not designed for 50, then only 25 can be put in here. I guess I'd need to know a little bit more about, how many cars can I put in the two locations, particularly down on the hill and then down in the front, what the two land purchases were? But it's my understanding is that the number of students is going to stay the same?
That's correct.
Okay, so the increase in parking is going to be due strictly to the increase in space, floor space?
Sorry, can you say that again, please?
I said the increase in parking requirements are due to the increase in floor space?
Exactly right.
And then, how many is that again?
The increase in floor space? It's 10,500 square feet.
More interest in the cars, the parking.
Sorry?
How many parking spaces is that equate to?
That would be, I believe, a total of 200 parking spaces.
We would need to meet code with the additional 53 spaces.
Okay.
And that's why we originally came to the board saying that we need relief, because we're a school and which is documented in the draft decision, that we want to go for 11. And then the neighbors did not want that, understandably, we respect their opinion, and we enjoy the neighborhood up there on Watch Hill Drive and the Inlee School. But we have a dilemma. We want to try to take cars off the street for the neighbors and for the safety of everyone involved in the school and the neighbors, but at the same time, we want to listen to the neighbors and not build the parking that they don't want us to build. So we're in the same dilemma as you guys and a little bit cornered at the moment because while the right thing to do is to build more parking to get more cars off the street, the other right thing to do is to help the neighbors and not build as big a parking lot. So the solution here was to try to hear what the neighbors are saying, strip out all the parking. I met with Laura up on the hill. We took a good look at it. We designed it. We've done a few designs. We have everybody down here again. And it's a little bit of a dilemma, but I think the solution here is a good one for everybody involved because we're putting in, with increased landscaping, buffers and so forth, just two parking spaces that I agree does creep up the elevator. There's no hiding that fact. But we're not going for the spaces that we want. We're bringing it back to the two. And I think that the right point about the traffic going up the hill from the school is that it's just going to be handicapped and emergency, and we really think that that will obviously settle it right down. We're not going to let, and with the new signage that you guys have already discussed, we really think we're going to control this and shut it down. And if I could, while I'm talking, just add one more thing, is that what we're really going to do, William, is when we have an event, and we always have police officers here, it's an absolute fact, you can check the money that the school has paid to the police officers when we have louder events, we are going to do a better job at making sure that we have a big event, we have two police officers, we're going to make sure that only handicapped cars go up here, we're going to make sure that the new sign we put in by the mailbox is respected, and we are going to be ready that when everybody says, hey, enough cars have come up here that it's full, enough cars have added to this area that it's full, we are then going to invoke a van and a plan that will bump people over to the blooming place. And that's how we're going to handle it, and I think it makes sense, and I think it's documented here. This could be a few words that after tonight, we can agree, we want to fine-tune some language and that type of thing, but the intent here is that we're listening to the neighbors. We should be building more parking here. We're not because we're trying to help our neighbors. And we don't want more traffic coming up the hill, so we're limiting it to just the feedback from the accessibility board. And we are committed to making sure we only park on one side and that we will continue to hire police officers, and we will have a van that bring people over to the blooming place.
Good summary.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, you said it there, but I think it's important. The difference in parking is only two spots, from what's there now to what is proposed, correct?
That's correct.
That's the two additional handicap spaces.
No, I thought it was six. Didn't you say you added four more?
Well, they were going to take it away.
No, no, but they moved four somewhere else.
I want to clarify. At our last meeting with you, we were talking about taking away four spaces. Now, we are not taking away those four spaces, but we are adding two spaces.
Right. And that was 10 for?
Technically, we are adding two spaces overall, since our last board meeting, you might say we're adding six. Actually, just a quick point, actually, technically adding a total three spaces because we're restriping the old handicap spaces, so the net increase is three spaces.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Bill?
No, just a comment. As to the building, depending on what happens with the access board, I have no problems at all with that building.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, you know, the parking is going to continue to be an issue that needs to be managed. There's no question about it. The school is an educational use that falls under the Dover Amendment, and so the zoning requirements are not particularly applicable, although I applaud your attempts to get as much parking and get it in the right location as you have done. It looks to me like parking on that property across the street.
Desire?
Yes. Would not only be possible, but desirable in the sense that the access to that property doesn't require you to penetrate too far up Watch Hill Drive. I agree with Bill. It would be very interesting to see a layout reasonably superimposed on that property and on the property down front near Route 123, to get some sense of what's possible and reasonable, and certainly it's not a series of striped spaces that are eight and a half by 18 feet, because people are just going to kind of scatter themselves over the available land, but it still would be an interesting number to have in mind. I had some thoughts on the building, and I think I've communicated those to you, actually.
I'm sorry, you're the building inspector, right?
Local building inspector, assistant building inspector.
So yes, I do appreciate your comments that you've given us.
And I'm very glad that you met with the Commission on Disabilities and very glad that you'll be seeing Mr. Hopkins and the AAB. I really don't have a lot of additional input. I think it's a good plan. It's going to be very interesting visually and architecturally when it's realized, so.
Great. Well, thank you for your correspondence and thank you for your comments tonight. Bob?
Well, sticking with the parking, just so I understand, and I want to understand the concerns of the neighbors, these parking problems only happen during special events? Are normal daily activity that there's enough parking for everybody?
Because I understand that these problems only occur during special events.
That's not correct. Part of the case.
Did you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Chris Campbell. I live on Watch Hill Drive.
Okay.
And that's what I was trying to understand, that normal Wednesday, the teachers have places to park, but everyone's off Watch Hill Drive, and it's only during a play or parent-teacher conference night or something like that where we have this overflow, you know, these large events where that might happen, I don't know.
Again, that's how I understand it.
Of course, yeah.
But maybe you could elaborate a little bit?
Yeah. Again, Chris Campbell, Watch Hill Drive. I would say routinely there are cars every day parked up the hill across from the neighbor's house. I'd go so far as to say, I think.
He on the mailbox?
Oh, yeah. Well, we are.
Can they park on this side of the street? Both sides.
And it looks to me like they're employees even, so I would, I think things sound good here, but in practice, they're just not happening. So I do get concerned when the school can't even control its employees and enforce the parking considerations that were set forth when the art barn went in. So it leads to further concern about going forward where, I believe when that art barn was built 14 years ago, the intent seemingly was to keep the traffic, keep the parking down below the art barn and away from the residential areas. And this seems to encourage things moving further up the hill. And I would get concerned about the school's ability to enforce things that are being said tonight, based on a long history of not being able to do that.
Thank you. Appreciate that input. We'll get to the rest of the public comment. I just want to make sure we get to the rest of the board comments first.
Well, no, that was just my understanding, whether it was several times during the school year, if it was a daily thing, that's what I wanted to understand. I mean, I know where the school is. I think I've been up Watch Hill Drive once or twice, it was in the off hour, so I wanted to understand the impact to the neighborhood.
Sir, would it be possible to just respond to that point if I could, or is that not appropriate?
Will you yield the floor for a minute?
I'll yield the floor.
And I appreciate your comments, and I've talked to Donna, the headmaster, about this specific issue. And one of the things that, you know, the neighbors have changed over the years, and you guys know better than me who's lived here longer and all that type of thing, but she really thought that there was an opinion of the neighbors that they didn't want any no-parking signs on the street, which makes it difficult for us. And if tonight we can agree that we're going to put these signs up, it will really help the school be able to enforce it. So again, we're trying to balance what the neighbors want with what's right, and I think a big thing we could agree on tonight is that, and I have no idea what your opinions are, but if we can put those signs up, you know, and I think if we can really create a don't-go-past-here zone, if we can put the sign up with the handicap in the accessible area, I really think that we can do a better job as a school and you guys can feel more comfortable as a cul-de-sac, that, hey, there's a line there. It's at the mailbox and there's a sign now, and we are really going to make sure that if someone does creep up there, we're going to figure out whose car it is, and we're going to talk to that parent. Sometimes it's a grandparent, and I think with these permanent signs, that's going to help. So Donna's been, I think, caught in the middle because we've challenged her over the years about why aren't there signs there, and she said the neighbors don't want a sign. So I think that if we can adopt this plan and this program that we're talking about, and those signs can go into place, I think that you're going to see better results.
Thank you.
All right. With the parking issue, this goes back to something that Laura had said in terms of the language that goes into the handbook that's handed out. I think that the headmaster needs to be more assertive, way more assertive. And I think the sign that you put out there, violators will be towed at their own expense because we live in an age that it's all about me, and nobody wants to be inconvenienced, and they will park wherever they want. And you can talk to them and make nice with them, but when the next thing comes along, they're going to do it again because I'm special. And that's the society in which we live, and it's unfortunate that it's all about me. So I think that you all have to be a little bit more assertive, I'm not using the word aggressive, but assertive, with the parents, with the. aggressive, but assertive, with the parents, with the parents and by extension relatives, that, you know, we are here to not only teach your children, but we're giving them values about how to get along with other people, which are the neighbors. Okay? The other issue that I have, and this goes back to a special permit site plan administrat- not, a special permit site plan administrative review, and you had mentioned the temporary classrooms. Those were permitted for three years, back in 2006, and they're still there. And you're talking about moving them down. Are they going to be permanent, or will they ultimately go away?
So the idea about relocating those temporary modular classrooms is just a discussion at this point, because we've also reached out to contractors with the idea of supplying some new trailers relocating those areas. Regardless of whether we are relocating these, or we provide other trailers in the location, they are temporary, and they tend to go away once this building is completed.
Because these did not go away. They did not go away.
So these would have a finite life. We would, we would put a deadline on removal of them.
The temporary units?
Yes.
Because they were, um, this is dated-
Technically, these modular classrooms are going away now.
Okay, but again, I think the concern that people have, and it's something that we've run into on the planning board, is enforcement. And, you know, there's a certain amount of trust, there's a certain amount of, we really want people to do what they say they are going to do, then we can all get along to go along.
Well, I think as Laura articulated, there has been kind of a change in leadership at the school.
You know what? That's immaterial. It's immaterial because the neighbors are the neighbors. And the, everyone will, will agree that Montessori has morphed into Enly, it is becoming bigger, and it's, you know, it's a private school, it's, it is what it is. But you have to take care of the people around you, that it is truly, truly important that their needs be met.
I agree with that. And our intention is to have this be enforced by the school?
I don't think that they can. I really don't. I think it's something that, that is going to have to go one step further. And especially if you get a snow, or if you get some rain event, you don't want all these people parking on the grass, because they'll never get out. And you should have a tow truck ready. So, you know, you have to figure this out, and you have to figure it out to please these people.
Steve, would you mind, can I, a couple of points there?
Um, yeah, but we've got, we've got public comments here as well, so be short, because I'd like to give everybody an opportunity here, and it's, it's getting on to 10 o'clock.
Um, I completely agree that we should do a better job enforcing this, and I think that, you know, I'm glad I'm here as the current chair of the master plan committee, and that we can do some things here, we can, you know, take a fresh look at this and document it and move forward in a productive way. Those signs are going to help me quite a bit. It's going to help our board police our headmaster to have some real teeth and make sure that no one is going to park up here. We're going to forbid that, and I think the signage is going to go a long way to help communicate that. And as people violate that, and they get reprimanded because of it, as parents, as grandparents, as whoever they might be, we're going to figure out who they are, we're going to tell them not to do it anymore, and we will tow that car.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's the first commitment. And the second commitment is, as far as those temporary buildings that you want to see gone, we want to see them gone too, and that's why I'm here tonight. And, you know, and I've talked to Laura about this. We need to be demoing the build to stay on schedule, and I've told everybody, I've told Jack, I've told the neighbors, I've told Laura, tried to communicate as clearly as I can. What's important to us is, because we're getting pitch from outside, is that we need to demo these buildings as soon as the kids get out of school, so we can keep it safe, not only for the neighbors, because what I haven't heard enough about tonight is the kids at the Enly School. And, you know, I'm a volunteer, I'm doing this as a volunteer, and the other thing that's important is to get rid of those buildings that were before my tenure. And I'm here tonight, I've done a lot of work, the whole committee has done a lot of work, and the board has done a lot of work, and we need support tonight to move forward, to be able to stay on schedule and demo those buildings as soon as the kids get out, so we can get the dangerous work done before they get back in September. It's very important. Everyone is very heartfelt, and we're trying to work together here, so that we can come up with a amicable solution to move forward for the community. I'll stay short, so.
Thank you. Let's, um, let's open it up to the public, because I know people who are here waiting to, to speak. So please identify yourself and-
Hi. Thank you. How much time do we have left? Just curious. My name is Jesse Napoli, and I live on Watch Hill Drive, I live at 77, which is right next to the upper property that was, heard suggested that we turn it into some parking. And I want to speak for the families here, the seven houses here represented. So if you don't mind, I'd like to share some photos with you.
Sure.
So, um, I don't know if you had a chance, Ms. Harbaugh, we sent you that letter from 2001, that the board published with their decision to allow the art barn to go ahead under certain conditions. And our concern is that those conditions are broken almost every day, in that it was stipulated that there would be no on-street parking beyond a certain point up to a mailbox, which had since been moved further up Watch Hill Drive. And in fact, every morning and every afternoon, when families drop off their children and pick them up, the parking ranges all the way up into the cul-de-sac, making it difficult for families to get in or out of their homes. And I'm glad that we're, you know, we've mentioned your concern for emergency vehicles for the school, because that was actually our concern for ourselves, for times when the, both sides of the streets have, are filled with cars. So here's a photo of one of the events, the cars all the way up to the edge of the, the turnabout at the cul-de-sac. So this is just a, a typical event.
Is that recent?
That was actually the week before, prior to that we had.
Okay. This is all the way up?
That's all the way up to the circle at the end of the cul-de-sac. So those, those cars are circling all the way to the edge. And, and the letter, and, that was drafted in 2001, about March 1st, and it stipulated that there would be some street for the art barn. And here's a picture of the art barn, and, so I don't know where the 46 trees are, but it does not block the view of the art barn today. It is stipulated that there would be no events going to have anything to do with education program of the school. And I'm not sure that this qualifies, but this is a flyer that was put up in town a week before prior meeting for a core event. And I'm not sure what we mentioned that has to the education program. I'm also glad to hear that there will be no parking in the athletic field, because that means that I, I'm curious to know where the trees were in your drawing there, because currently, that street all the way up here is all lined with these mature trees. I can see the photo of our street. You can't see the athletic field, but in this rendering, there are no trees at all. And so I'm curious to know, you know, how, if those trees are going to remain, or if they were intended only to take out to get access to them by the, over, over the park.
We are not intending to remove all the trees here on this area. So that's inaccurate in the drawing there. When I make a plan like this, I don't put scientific-
So the part that's going to-
Identify the location of trees.
Be behind that screen.
Okay.
It's the actual site plan that I show, that I'm providing, it depends on the screen here.
Through that screen.
Right here?
Well, no, somewhere.
It's through all those trees, right?
I'm wrong, I believe when the art barn was discussed in 2001, and there was discussion on the screen, that was going to, I believe that it came towards a number of trees that had been planted. Is that right?
Yeah, there were a lot of different locations where they could be located, it didn't just have to be.
I believe, I believe, it seems to me that there are no more trees. Right. And again, I'm not sure that we're doing it. A hundred percent of the unit-
It may be that the trees, 46 trees, that they, that they were not put up to screen with the art barn from the neighbors.
Oh, does everyone understand the new trees we're going to be putting in for this project in a form of?
So the new trees are going to be located behind the mailbox, and will be down towards the corner, right? And then on the opposite side of the opposed entryway, up to essentially beyond the art barn, let's say twenty feet, and then turn to provide a screen with the building. So, and that, any additional, so any existing trees that are there that can be saved, they go away. So I think when they planted those original 46 trees, it wasn't to make a really good screen, because that's not a great thing to have either. They're kind of spaced out to be more natural, apparently.
I'm also, I'm curious to know if the property on the other side of Watch Hill Drive is commercial or residential, and if that is designed for-
This apartment?
Yeah.
Sunflower Hill.
Sunflower Hill, that you call Sunflower Hill. That is owned for our parking lot. Is it, is, is, that house is a private residence, which always purchased by the school.
So, so right now, having been purchased by the school, I would assume it's an, it's an educational use?
It's an accessory to an educational use.
That house cannot be used for educational use, possibly, it was-
We do not use the house for, just so you know, for educational use, but I believe what Bob is saying, Robert is saying, is that when, when a school purchases a property, is anybody going to fill in the blanks?
It's under the umbrella of the education.
I, I would presume it becomes part of the school's property, and therefore, part of the educational use encompassed by the, by the entire school.
As a non-for-profit.
And it's just used for meeting spaces, and so internal classes- Right, it's, and it's used for meeting spaces, because I think when you requested to have it to be used for classrooms, that was refused as a-
We never requested it to be used for classes. We never, it's just, just a factually, we never made that request, just because I don't want anyone to be confused.
All right. So I'm just curious to know if that is considered, since it's right next to my house, is that considered residential? Is it, it's a res- it was originally residential home, or if that's considered capable of being used for parking for the school?
Jesse, with all due respect, I think the answer we can give you tonight is it's school property owned by the school. We have no intention of using it for classrooms, because it would never meet code, it would take-
Yeah, let's pass that. I'm talking about the apartment.
Well, I think the way I described the parking earlier is, and again, we're stuck, because we're trying to use our property to park as many, as many cars as we can to keep, to keep cars off of this area, and you guys keep wanting to tell us, you know, but you don't want us parking cars. So, well, it's not so simple. It's actually really complicated, and I've been working on it for two years, okay? And, you know, I think the big thing here for tonight is, if we put those signs in, and we really police it, and we are willing to, to live by some very strict rules as it relates to that mailbox and signage, and we are willing to backfill our property for you guys, because we want to build a parking lot that you don't want us to build. We want to build a lot to pull cars off of that street. And we are listening to our neighbors, and we want to help you guys. And what we want to do is continuing to use police officers to manage major events, okay? We want to be able to use our other areas as productively as we can. We're not looking for you to say, hey, and you can't park here, and you can't park there, and you can't park here, and you can't park there, because then we're not working together.
All right. So, Rob, with regards to the two policemen that showed up, which were also stipulated in the 2001 letter, one of our neighbors, that's one of the police officers, or actually, I think there's one person, an asset person, if he is intending on trying to enforce the rule of not allowing cars parking up the hill, and his response was, I'm just trying to stay down here and keep people from killing each other. So he had no intent, he was really no intention of trying to keep cars from parking up the hill.
Let's, let's just, let's just get your comments out, and then-
Well, I guess the, you know, I'm, I just want to make the point that in 2001, this board agreed to allow the arts barn to be built with certain conditions, and those conditions have not helped. The off-site parking has not helped, it's never helped, actually. I don't know how long, if it's ever been done, the off-site parking that's ever worked. So I guess the point is, whatever gets done here, it really is, and Ms. Harbaugh has pointed out, enforcing, it really is about enforcing, because, you know, it could work, it could work if you could really enforce who can drive the hill. And really, we're just trying to maintain the peaceful nature of the neighborhood, which is, you know, why we're there. That street is not wide enough to accommodate parking, and it was ever meant to have cars parked by it, for obvious reasons, for, you know, throughput. If you allow cars to park up on Sunflower Hill, there's a very narrow, winding driveway up to that property, because it's, was meant to be residential. There is only room for one car to go all this long distance up to that property, so we don't have to consider, you know, someone coming up, someone trying to get out, there's going to be an issue there. So we have to be really carefully coordinated, cars coming up, and then only cars coming down, so we have to consider that as well. We are just trying to maintain the peaceful nature of the neighborhood as well.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Yes?
Christine Dambrosian, 96, Watch Hill Drive. Can I approach the board? The last time that we were here, we had talked about this being eleven spaces, and curb cut coming in. You've come back and redesigned, and have come back with two. Are you still having the curb cut up here, or is there any way that you can have your parking access this way versus so that we're not having the traffic come up the hill? So what seems to happen, we have a walkway, I don't know where that is, that goes over to Sunflower Hill, right here?
Yep.
So you have a crosswalk here, so we're asking our car, your cars, to come up beyond that crosswalk, and then into this parking lot right here, right? So is there any way that this law, if these, if this handicap parking has to be accessible to the art barn here, which is not there today, somehow you've avoided it today, how can we move these down to here, keep the traffic down the hill? I guess is what the point is, is what Ann had even mentioned. So is that a possibility? And that's, I guess, something that you're addressing with the, the disabilities as well. So I appreciate you bringing that to, to their attention. The concern still is, and will always be, the traffic coming around the corner. This is a cul-de-sac. The parents do not like today your drop-off in the morning and in the afternoon. So instead of going through the circle to drop off the kids, they come up the hill, drop the kids off here where the crosswalk is, continue to go around the turnaround and back down. So hence, you have three, four, five, six, seven, eight cars parked all along here, when you have six, seven, eight open parking spots for them to park here, drop their kids off. It's just a constant traffic that goes up the hill. Our concern and plea is, is there some way we can keep that parking down the hill? You have a lot of property down here that's flat, that could be used for parking. And if we can just come to some type of agreement to make it more accessible to the parking to stay down the hill, that would definitely appease the neighbors.
Thank you. Yes?
Brendan Kavanaugh, 92, Watch Hill Drive. I believe there is handicap accessibility to the arts barn today, is that correct?
Yes, there is.
So, so the project design that you have here, which, it looks very nice, but it's creating an accessibility problem, which is why you want to put the parking spots where you want to put them.
I can address that if you like.
Sure.
Excuse me, the existing ramp, which is attached to the modular buildings, they're structurally attached to the modular buildings. Modular buildings are in poor condition, they need to be removed. The ramp is in poor condition, it needs to be removed. The idea about relocating access, the architectural access board generally requires that the accessible path is as dignified as a primary path. You don't want people having to run the path into the building, right?
Yep.
So we wanted to make sure that people are able to enter the front of the building, not the back of the building. The best place to do that, even according to the Commission on Disabilities, is providing a handicap parking space here. In my humble opinion, the two parking spaces there, it's not an open license for people to move beyond that point of your concern. You know, we're just thinking about two-
We have the signage. And we have the signage?
Right, there is a signage there. There's a new policy which is being instituted in response to your concerns.
Do you, you have an issue with the porch right now not being accessible, right? Is there a way to creatively combine the accessibility of the porch and the arts barn with keeping the handicap parking down where it is?
I understand, I look at that condition, but there are code requirements that prevent me from achieving that. me from achieving that. So, no.
Length of ramps and the height of the ramps and that type of...
I mean, you need a certain amount of distance for the ramps, but I mean, I would almost think that, I would think that a creatively designed path that achieves the, you know, the requirements of it could give you both the accessibility to the porch and to the arts barn at the other level.
I did study that very fast. But the real estate that was given in this area and the code requirements that prescribe the length and run and straightness of the ramps, it was not achievable to get that in there.
And I can also point out, if I could just very briefly...
Briefly. Let's let the...
Again, we are cornered by parking, and your point about the drop-off is very well taken, and as, you know, we physically can't do it, and we also, we should be putting more parking in. We're not doing it to accommodate you guys. Those couple spaces that you're talking about, which the parents don't like about the drop-off, they are extremely valuable because it allows two more parents to come up and try to navigate. What they're trying to do is, like we all have, of all our kids, you want to drop your child off, you want to pick them up, you want to try to do it in an organized fashion, and we're committed to that, but, you know, we, it's a difficult balance. And, you know, the spaces you're talking about and the spaces that you're concerned about for the operational drop-off to succeed, those are important spaces. And we should be building more spaces, and we listen to you guys, and we're building less, and we are crap.
But it's not even parking, they're dropping their children off, so they don't have to park.
No, no, it certainly is parking.
All right, can we, let's keep the comments.
I guess the last thing I'd say is that there are currently, is it six curb cuts right today on the right-hand side of the, entering in the property, is that correct?
Yep, seven if you count the entrance on 123. Currently, there are seven curb cuts on this property.
And so we're looking at creating another curb cut for a gain of two spaces. I think there could be a little bit more creativity applied to not create another curb cut, not create traffic further up the hill, and to creatively...
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Let's let any others who have been waiting.
Terry Lee, 97, Watch Hill Drive. I want to thank Ms. Burbine for her comments about enforcement, because I think that's a real heart of the issue, at least from my perspective. We have 15 years of ineffective enforcement. If you look at the documents signed in 2001, all the things that we've already pointed out have not been complied with, number one. Number two, I almost see a pattern here. You put temporary buildings up long past their approved timeframe, papers don't get turned in that should be. I think there's a whole credibility issue behind this. Lived here 15 years, have never once heard anyone say we didn't want signs. Signs were part of the 2001 agreement, so that's anecdotal. I don't know where that comes from. So I think the enforcement of, and if you're basing the enforcement on handing a pamphlet to somebody at student orientation, isn't going to work. And the point about towing, if they do it, it would be effective. I've seen nothing. People park halfway in front of your driveway, they park on the grass, they park in front of the mailbox, which is already clearly defined, no parking. There's total disrespect for people's property in that area. That's why you'll see if you go there, people, neighbors have taken it upon themselves to put stones so people don't pull up there, they put their own signs there. So if you can assure us of enforcement, I don't think they can. They've been ineffective for 15 years. What changes? I give a new pamphlet? Is that the answer? Sorry, I do something, what, I stole somebody in front of their kid? It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not fair.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay. Laura?
Thank you. I just had something on the towing. Because Watch Hill Drive is a private road, I'm not sure that the towing is really going to work, because I believe before a tow truck tows you, they want to have something from a police officer saying that you're in violation of something. And the police had told the planning board and myself for some time that they would not go up there and they could not enforce no parking up there because it's a private street and they just don't have the jurisdiction up there. I did check on the process, at least how you begin the process of changing a private street to a public street. Obviously, there's a lot involved in that, and, you know, you'd have to be making some, you know, some complicated maybe decisions about it. But it starts with a petition signed by 75% of the property owners. It doesn't say the people that have 75% of the frontage, it says 75% of the property owners. So, you know, you need to count who those owners are in 75%, and then, you know, get them, get together, if that's what you want. You can talk to the DPW about how to best go about that. But I think that would be really important if you really want police to go up there and to get people...
And those roads have to meet certain, you know, engineering standards, basically, and if they don't, then the petitioners have some obligation to fund those changes, too.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. My point really, I didn't articulate it particularly well, is prevention is the answer here. Let's not expect behaviors to change by putting two parking spaces in there. If you think that's going to stop people from parking in front of people's property, it's not going to. I think everyone here should take a walk up the hill to see what parking we, we purportively have a parking plan, yet no one can quantify the number of spaces that that parking plan provides for. I don't see how that's feasible. I mean, I would think it's incumbent upon them to say, if I have a parking plan, it's seven spaces here, it's 20 spaces there, 50 spaces over here. I'm not in any way at all suggesting that you guys wouldn't require that, but it just seems kind of ludicrous to me to say I have a plan, but I can't tell you anything about it. But I couldn't get away with that in my job.
I can explain that a lot.
Sure, love to.
So the parking area is a parking area, basically the grass area, not defined and striped.
Understood.
So it's difficult for me to define what would be a parking area and what, does it quantify how many cars have been there?
Then I would suggest you don't call it a plan. You have a lot where some people would park, maybe five people, maybe 10 people, it's not a plan.
And people do probably park there, yeah.
Go ahead. But my point was not, you know, prevention is the key. And those two additional parking spaces that they're asking for solve nothing.
Right, but it also doesn't sound like, and this is just off the cuff here, but it doesn't sound like it's going to create much of an additional problem. The problem exists right now, is what I'm hearing.
That's right.
That the problem, and it's not even necessarily just a parking problem, it's a drop-off problem and a drive-by problem, if you will. Okay.
Point one, quick question.
Yeah, last comment.
Did I hear you say that you had contracted for off-site parking for special events?
I believe there's an agreement with the, sorry, I can't remember the name of the business.
Every Blooming Thing?
So possible consideration, just throwing out there, is that something that the school would consider for its employees during the daytime? Off-site parking there?
Well, they need the parking there for the business.
They need the parking during the daytime, right? For the business.
Well, it's, on the weekend, yes, it's very crowded there. On the weekdays, very empty parking lot. Just an idea.
We could have that conversation.
Just an idea for what it's worth.
Okay.
The other thing I was, well, just quickly, I was thinking that, you know, if you come in off of Watch Hill, or from 123 on Watch Hill Drive, to try to alleviate people going up around the cul-de-sac, you could say, fine, I know this is all about enforcement, but right turn only, you know, only residents behind, that are beyond this point, so you're forcing people to make that right turn around the parking lot and then coming out. So the only people that would be beyond that would be the potential two people for the handicap? Is that feasible? Saying that you're basically forcing any person or any parent that comes in to go around the parking lot, basically, the loop of the parking lot, right, as opposed to the loop of the cul-de-sac?
You know, I think... Would it be possible that we could put a sign that would say, residents only, at whatever point we agree upon? Resident parking only, resident access only, to your point? We could even put a yellow line in the road, basically said, residents, residents only from this point on. I think we could agree on that. That would make it clear, it would make it easy to, easier to enforce.
It's clearer, yeah.
So that, you know, there's a line right there. And I like the idea of saying, okay, if you're with the school, you go in, circulate around, I think we can tweak our parking area so we can accommodate that in better fashion. And it's possible, I'm not, this is off the cuff, but it's possible that we could look at our existing parking areas and deal with the drop-off situation, so we have multi-lanes, which we do now, and maybe we could make them a little bigger as part of this project, so that makes that drop-off issue more manageable.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, right now, I mean, the striping is very faded, and I mean, I was there on a Sunday, which obviously was not a good indication of any traffic because it was quite quiet. But I was, I went the wrong way, I'll tell you. I went in the wrong way on the parking lot to park there, to walk up to Sunflower Hill, and I'm like, oh, there's a, there's an arrow here that says one-way only. It wasn't clearly marked, I guess is my point.
As a component of the project, Sean alluded to at the beginning, that we would be, with the addition of the two handicap spaces, we would be taking the handicap spaces that are in the main parking lot and re-striping them so that there's, what, warrants that are free, but that would mean that we would be re-striping the whole area post-construction.
Just one last comment. Our guest, our request as neighbors, as Brendan had indicated, if there is some way to keep the traffic flow for handicap, for non-handicap, down the hill, that is what our request is. So somehow, is there a way that we can remove those two handicap parking, another curb cut up the hill, further down, and try to avoid any additional traffic congestion that happens day in and day out from that? So that's, I guess, where our stand is at.
When we meet with the Architectural Access Board, we can look at that question in particular.
We can share that one more time. Thank you.
Yeah. And have you, have you considered that already? Access from the existing entryway to those spots?
Again, there's a challenge of dimension in terms of getting the ramps necessary. Problem is the...
I'm not saying the ramps, I'm saying actually physically getting to these handicap spots over there. Can you get to them through the existing parking lot?
Creating a drive-in? No, we wouldn't be able to do that. The grade change is too great.
Is that right?
So the parking lots are down around elevation 112. The entrance to the arts barn is up around 118, so you have an eight-foot vertical distance to travel.
And it's...
So that's roughly 110 miles per hour.
And there's a stormwater management system right there.
Yeah.
And there's a system transformer there.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the board?
Well, again, just looking at something where it doesn't mitigate the neighbors completely, but to somehow force at least drop-off, where you're like, you know, having to go around the parking lot if you're dropping your kids off, and like, there is absolutely no drop-off and going up Watch Hill Drive and going around the cul-de-sac and enforcing that.
And I think, I was glad to hear tonight that you guys have receptive to signage, and that's going to go a long way. And I apologize for, before my tenure, if there's been a miscommunication between the neighborhood and the school about your lack of desire for signage. And we obviously want to get you involved in that because I'm sure you want to get comfortable with the amount of signage, and I agree with you, Richard, that with the right amount of signage, this thing can happen, and it's a balance between, you know, you guys not wanting to see a bunch of signs and us having enough signage that we can, that we can police.
Okay. So I think we need to figure out how to address this issue, and what's the pleasure of the board at this point? I mean...
Well, I think they have to, I mean, they were going to meet with the Architectural Access Board anyway, right?
Yes.
Well, we already didn't start to have them.
Anyway... Well, we were going to have to wait before a decision until they came back with that.
Yeah, but if they tell you that it's elevation nine instead of elevation 11, I mean, what's that mean to us? They're going to, whatever the board says, is it going to have to comply with?
Well, if I may, I believe that there is a preliminary statement of conditions that Laura has authored that requires us to seek and get approvals from, that are required from the project. So going to the Architectural Access Board, I think, would be covered by that.
Yeah, that was before all these, these neighborhood issues really came to the fore. So I was wondering if you all want them to go to the traffic rules to kind of try to get all these things pinned down, or...
Well, I think we need to get to some kind of plan that pins this all down, because it seems like we have too many loose ends here.
Well, and I agree about the plan. I mean, I realize, like, for instance, let's just say that the, the grass in front of the middle school, right near 123, I think it would be helpful, even if it's an estimate, to say, we can park 20 cars here, or 30 cars. Because right now, I don't know if it's 20, I don't know if it's 200, you know, I'm sure it's not 200, but at least some idea of saying, okay, onsite, we can, we think we can accommodate, you know, 50 cars in our parking. We have a, we have a plan in place that will allow 50 cars, either parking up on Sunflower Hill or in front of the middle school. And then beyond 50, we have a plan in place to go to every blooming thing. But I think right now, I don't know how many cars that is.
And it only addresses the safety problem?
Yeah, I think we need to address both problems. Normal operation and then event operation. And I think what you're talking about is an event operation plan, which should be a plan that you can definitely figure out how many spaces you can accommodate onsite versus, versus, you know, on the overflow. I think a comment made here also about, you have to be careful about one-way traffic flow on Sunflower Hill. Has to be one-way coming in, and then when it's, got to all turn around and go back the other way.
Yeah, it's really narrow.
But that's an, that's an event parking. I think the other piece that needs to be addressed, which it sounds like you're getting to, is the day-to-day traffic and how that's going to be managed and controlled, and keep people from going beyond the loop turnaround unless they're one of the two handicap parkers. That's the only people that should go up.
Or the residents.
Well, I'm even saying anybody accessing the school, if you will.
Right.
Yeah, so you can, the first control points at the loop.
Right. It should be the control point, right?
I absolutely agree, but I would, I would like the board to consider giving us approval tonight. You know, the schools, that will be, we're going on our third meeting, and, you know, in the discussions about it with Laura and the draft decision that she sent over, you know, I believe we're in good enough shape now that we should be able to work on these things. With approval pending, it's positive outcome. You know, with all due respect, we started in February trying to work with the neighbors. They really only galvanized right before the last meeting, and it's been difficult, and a lot of time and energy has gone into trying to get to tonight. I was very clear with Laura that it's very important for our plans to be able to be, you know, bidding the demolition, to take the old buildings down, and is there any way that we can, you know, I think we're all working towards getting this done, but, you know, can we go with, you know, the plan that we have been trying to, you know, for all of us here? Everyone has needs here. One of the needs the school has is we need to be, you know, doing construction drawings and demolishing when school gets out in June, and, you know, we have no problem telling you guys, hey, we think we can park this many cars here? You guys could say, hey, I think you can cram a few more. Think you can park this many cars here? I think you can cram more. And then whatever the balance is, we have a plan at the other place, and we, we put a plan, Paul, can you put the plan up, please? We put a plan together that put, you know, that we presented to the neighbors, and we offered to meet with the neighbors, and instead, they just sent a letter to the board. And, listen, we appreciate, you know, it's all in an email, we can all read it, so it's a fact, it's a matter of record, but we, in our plan, we've talked about how we can have a general policy, and we can have special events, parking, we're willing to edit these things, but we knew that a plan was going to be necessary, and we submitted it to the neighbors, and I asked if anyone could meet with me, and that, and that did not happen.
In February?
We never got anything.
It's an email, Jesse, that you got, and that...
In February?
Okay, let's let one person talk at a time, please.
Listen, what I'm trying to say is, we have no problem working on this plan. We've suggested signage and locations. I'm glad to hear tonight that you guys are receptive to signage, and we are willing to do that. But what's important for us, and what we have been operating in good faith is, we need... need to be able to start work on demolishing these old buildings when the kids get out of school. And another two weeks is going to be tough on us. So what I'm asking you guys to consider is let us move forward and continue to work on this.
I think it's, it, it could be possible to put together an approach that requires this piece of it to be resolved going forward. And it may not, it may mean that you have to accept that there won't be an approval of the handicap spaces until we get this resolved.
You guys want us to build it without the spaces?
I'm just saying, we need to get, we need to get this issue resolved.
I agree, I agree.
And if you want to proceed before it gets resolved, then we need to have a way to make sure it does get resolved.
I agree.
Does this issue exist, whether you put the addition on that or not?
Right.
And that's what you're doing? You're, 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 the sins of the past have caught up with you.
And I get the frustration--
And I didn't commit the sins!
No, no, I'm not suggesting that you did.
Not suggesting you did, but--
If it was that important, and I get the frustration, and the parking issue is known, there wouldn't be cars on the street today, if it was that important. So I, I get, I get the urgency, but I don't see it--
Because we want to build more parks.
Places the cars that don't park there.
I take it exactly what you're feeling like you're doing us this great favor by not adding those 11 spaces? Because the overflow parking is not the issue. We have the parking issue day-to-day, so you have all that parking available. They don't want to use it.
And I don't know why you need the extra space if your student body is not increasing. Why do you need the extra parking?
Because of square footage.
Just because of the square footage.
So it's your design that requires more parking?
Right, not the student body, and not--
Right.
Okay. We've got enough conversation going on here. Let's, let's move it back to the board, and hear any other input?
So when, when does school get out? Just what are the dates?
I got two days there, I should know that. It's like mid-June.
So if we, I'm just talking, if we were to curtail this till the next meeting, for you to come up with, maybe addressing some of these issues, that would be, what, the 29?
It'd be May 28.
28?
Yeah, I don't know if you would be able to get a meeting of the Traffic Rules Committee by then, because I think--
They don't, they meet just the first Tuesday of the month, I think.
And, yeah, I think that would put it till June 11.
Okay. And the other thing you could do is approve it, but with these certain conditions, that this has to be, like, how would, how would you even do that?
Well, I think the downside of doing it that way would be that, you know, you, you wouldn't know what was going on. I mean, it would be, I guess it could be worked out through the traffic rules, but you'd be approving something you didn't really know what it was.
They'd have to come back here with a definitive plan.
Yeah.
Right. That should, that would have to be part of a condition.
So I think that means that it gets continued to June 11. I don't see any way around that.
Laura, if I may, if any statement of conditions that you guys propose would then be up to the building inspector to make sure that those conditions are met before he issues a building permit. Is that correct?
We wouldn't typically rely on that. We would typically require certain things at certain timeframes, like before a pre-construction conference, we might want to see a copy of the lease with, with the blooming place, a parking plan that's got the blessing of the traffic rules. You know, there are certain things like that that could be put in place. You know, what we have now in the way of an approval doesn't really--
It's not going to cut it.
--address all of that. So, I mean, what we could do is, if the board wants to go in that direction, we could pull something together by May 28. You know, I mean, there would still be--
As a set of conditions.
As a set of conditions, yeah.
We get three problems. We get, one is the building, right? The building is, I think, is a non-issue with the exception of what happens that go to the access board. So I think that's non-issue. The next issue that I see is the day-to-day parking. And then the third issue is the, is the overflow, the, the event parking.
You're right. And it's not just the day-to-day parking, it's the day-to-day drop-off as well, it sounds like.
Yeah.
The flow.
I mean, that's a matter of putting in traffic director.
Would you like, you want me to speak to that for a second, William, or are you just making a statement?
William is reserved for my mother, I'm Bill. So the question is, how would you control it on a day-to-day basis, and short of having somebody there on the loop to keep them going up? Really don't have it, it's the only way that I see to do it.
So I think what we're, what we're trying to accomplish tonight is that, I'm encouraged to hear that signage is welcome in the neighborhood, and that we need to come up with a plan that will circulate and communicate and all agree on, that will allow a signage flow for drop-off, and a more specific plan for major events. And, and, you know, we put a good faith effort here, and it's a good starting point, it's not going to take too long. We have, we already have, you know, signs pointed out, and, you know, text in here, which we can elaborate on and get more specific on, if you want to call it out to a certain lease, and if we want to talk about how many projected spaces we think may be able to fill into this area, and how many that fill into that area, and the police offices that have always been here, and then when we invoke moving cars off. I mean, I think that's what we're talking about, but we have a real problem in that we need to be demolishing these buildings, and, you know, we need to start working on it.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We will commit, if you will commit to meeting within the next Memorial Day, two to three weeks, we will make our civil engineer available, who is civil, and we, and our architect, and we will meet with you, and we will come up with a realistic plan. I think there clearly is a, yeah, it's not mixed, the words are evading me, but, you know, it's, I don't even know it's conflicting, it's just, we need, we need to make our needs get closer together.
I think you're talking about a disconnect between the Inlee School and the parents.
Yeah, that would be the right word.
I think, I think what Steve is saying is that, is that we'll come up, hearing whatever all the needs are tonight of the board and the neighbors. We will take another shot at the plan, we will issue you another plan like we issued this plan.
I think, I think we'll, we'll meet with you. We'll meet with you. We'll sit, we'll sit down with our engineer, our architect. And we'll sit down, and similar to what we did with the, with the Barraries Board, and what we've done with Laura, and we'll sit down, and if we can come to an agreement, a couple of weeks after Memorial Day, we'll see if we can-- That works engineering-wise, and also works logically. You know, the combination of signage, and maybe some of the drop-off areas, or extra wires, some more car conversation.
Right.
And when you say engineering, what you mean, the curb cut?
Well, no, basically, when I say engineering-wise, it's great, I'm an architect, he's an architect, but he, we'll, I'll say stuff, Sean, I'm looking--
It's going to look like this, right?
Thank you. What were you talking about? It's, oh, yeah, we're going to put a ramp that goes, do you realize that ramp's going to be 120 feet long? You know, it's, so, so we need the realism of the civil engineer, who can sit there and say, you can't put cars there, yeah, that's going to work, or that radius is too tight, or that radius is not--
That's my point, is that discussion include the, the location of those handicap spots and the access? So, you know, I think--
So is this, this is a plan that, that by the 28th, you can then have something put together that has some teeth in the, in a planning board decision?
Well, I'm, I'm rethinking this a little bit.
All right.
I think that there's really a lot of work that has to be done here, and some of it's engineering, and some of it's just, like--
Communicating.
Negotiating and communicating. I think it still would have a real purpose to have one of the town boards, like, I think it belongs in the traffic rules, involved with this, where they have the police, he's the public safety officer, and also the deputy fire chief go to this meeting, that they can, they can insist that they get the fire access that they need and the emergency access. They can also be very realistic about what you can do on a private road, what you can enforce, what you can't enforce, so that there's no illusions about it. So I think that's kind of important. So I'm thinking maybe this would tie into the occupancy permit for, you know, for opening the school, which would be, you know, when the building is, is up, but, you know, before kids go into it. Which would allow some time to get this worked out, instead of trying to do it like--
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we need enough information to write it into a decision so we know that it's going to be--
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, where Bob is, you know, intimately involved with the building department, I just want to know if you think that's going to work.
Making a successful result that everybody's bought into--
Well, not that part so much.
The occupancy, the occupancy permit.
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, it, it works in a way, Laura, because, you know, it's definitely something to, how to put it? There's, there's, there's definitely a stick to be, to be held there. But I guess what I'm, what I'm fearful of is that you've committed to the project, I mean, you've totally committed to the project, it's, it's built--
Yep.
Before you have any assurance that a mutually agreeable solution to these problems can be arrived at.
Yeah.
And that's, that's--
Okay, I, I, yeah, I can certainly understand. Yeah. So--
I think I hear kumbaya, sir, for real, so.
So maybe this process just needs to be continued a little bit, and just keep your finger, everybody keep their fingers crossed that everything can get back on track for them.
You know, I'd, I'd love to have the kind of time that you, that, you know, what you're suggesting would, would allow, because I honestly think that, that, that amount of time, that six months to a year, could be well-used in terms of coming up with a master plan--
I'm talking about one month, I'm not talking--
No, no, I understand that, yeah.
Okay.
But if you allow this discussion to continue up to the point where an occupancy permit will be granted for the new construction, that's a lot, that's a much longer--
Okay, well, I'm backing way off of that. But I, I think that it probably is going to take maybe, like, realistically, for the Traffic Rules Committee to meet, that will be like four weeks, that won't be two weeks.
No, right, I understand, I understand.
So, um, but, you know, so then, I, I think if you want--
Could we do this? Could we get a condition, after the met, get a condition spelled out that says, you know, kind of generally what, what they're going, you know, what they're going to do, what, what sort of steps they're going to take, and have a, have a plan, come back here as a condition of releasing construction as opposed to demolition, or, or something, you know, have a, have a trigger in there somewhere.
Yeah, I think so.
Right?
Yeah, so that they can demolish the buildings and get that part started, but not--
But there's still a motivation to get this resolved, and get it resolved to everybody's satisfaction, so they can move on to construction.
There, there are some sort of timeframes that are built in from, from the building department approval direction as well. We have 30 days after the permit application is received to review the permit, and before the permit needs to be issued. This is a complicated project, it's, it's got a lot of facets to it. It wouldn't surprise me if quite a few of those 30 days were in fact used, although we tend to turn things around faster. This is a significant project, it's not, it's not a house. You can get a demolition permit in advance of a building permit, if that needs to start, and they don't have to be connected one to the other. So that's a, you know, that's, you can gain a little bit of time going that route. So I'm just, you know, I, it's, at 10 minutes of the lovin' at night, it's a little hard to be totally coherent about the, the process, but there is a process.
Yeah.
And it doesn't happen overnight.
Laura, can I ask you a clarifying question? Does the town's traffic department have jurisdiction over private roads?
Oh, yeah, they, they have jurisdiction over everything.
You know, Laura, with all due respect, you know, last time we asked, you know, who we needed to meet with, and what we needed to do, and the accessibility board came up, you know, and, and this traffic board didn't come up. And the neighbors were here last time, challenging the project as well. I'm comfortable we're going to be able to work this out with the neighbors, but the school has a real issue here, and we would have scrambled, had you said that last time, and we would have met with them by now, like we did with the accessibility board. And I'm just feeling a little bit drawn out, because it's been crystal clear about, you know, what our needs are, and what we need to achieve tonight. I think what you guys are proposing makes a lot of sense. I mean, this plan that we need to put together is not, it's, it's, it's just, you know, we are very far along with the plan, it needs to be tweaked. I look forward to you guys accepting an invitation from me to get together and talk about this. And I think we can work it out, and I think that, you know, like I've been saying consistently, we need to keep this moving.
Well, I, I'm totally sympathetic to that. But I think I indicated what I, you know, what my reasons were when I was discussing--
As a compromise, I think you had mentioned this, or I said it, so what I'm hearing is in the next two weeks, right, that's when our next meeting is, the 20th? Within the next two weeks, there would be a meeting between the Inlee School and the neighbors.
Yep.
That meeting, when it gets on the books, could you kind of have an invite, the representatives of the traffic board?
No, 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 that's not the way it works. No, I'm sorry.
I, I would be comfortable--
How come we weren't told we had to meet with--
I would be comfortable with having, making sure that meeting happens, come back on the 28th, have a definitive, clear condition that requires an additional meeting with the traffic board and all of that, that's tied into the sequencing that Bob's talking about, and we can approach it that way. I just don't feel like we know, and, you know, all due respect, right? We heard at the end of the last meeting that these conditions from 2000 and all of that weren't being, weren't being met. And so there's been a lot of information flying back and forth, including to all the members of the board, and we are trying to sort this out and get to a place where everybody's not completely happy, but the compromise works. And I, I think that will be the best for everybody, if we can do that. And so my suggestion would be, you know, absent, trying to sit here and write something that we really don't know anything about at this moment, is to have them come back on the 28th. We'll go through that particular, you know, the, actually, the building access is, as, as Bill mentioned, if, if you'll have an answer on the building access, and then we'll do the parking thing, and we'll try to tie it into an overall--
I think we need to give an expectation. So what I'm looking for, and let me go back to the three pieces I had, I had the building, I had the day-to-day, and I had the, the event parking.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I think what we need to do is to have an understanding, which would come out of your meeting with the neighbors, to sit there and say, yes, this on a day-to-day basis is how it works. And you need to be assured, they need to be assured that it's going to work, and to be assured that you're going to follow through with what you've got to do. Now, on the long-term, I think, at least what I need to know is to get a sense of, how many, how many parking spaces do I have? If you came back and you, this evening, you came back and told me I could put 30 at the bottom of the hill, and I could put 28 at the top of the hill, right? And I'd sit there and say, okay, that's 58, that's, what, 116 people, some of the two people go in a car? And for 100 people seem to be your benchmark based on your parking. But if I had that, I'd, at least I have a sense as to, to what, what capability I'd have for the parking. Right now, I don't know whether it's five, or whether it's, it's 50. So I think, so the expectation would be, from mine, is how many parking spaces do I have, right? And what am I going to do, how am I going to fill them up? If, if you go to a baseball game, or a football game, and they fill out this section, and the next section, and the next section, then they work it that way, and that's what I'm looking for. And I think that can be done by the 28th. And I think you could come back up, and then you could, as a condition, have it, you know, be reviewed by, by traffic rules. But I don't see where traffic rules are going to really do much other, they look at the traffic flow, which is, which is your loop. Pretty hard to, hard to improve upon that. But what happens is, is the violator, violators, violations are the people that don't go around the loop to create the problem.
And I would expect a look at the emergency access.
Yeah, I would sit there and send somebody with a little steno pad, and sit there and copy down the license plates of the cars that are parked up the street, and you know exactly who owns them.
Well, actually--
It could be aliens.
That'd be a good part of the plan, absolutely. That would be a part of the plan, absolutely.
Actually, an early part of the plan may be the station, the traffic guy at the end of the loop.
Right.
And just turn people around. Just don't let them go, right?
A crossing guard.
And start training them at the beginning of the school season, every year, you know? You don't have to leave them there forever, probably. People ultimately get the message if you have signage and all of that, but that may be a way to make it, make sure it's prevention, right? It prevents people from going up around the corner.
And, yeah, and I think the, you know, like everyone said here tonight, I, I think the architecture and the, the whole sort of overarching theme of the school is really good, or what you're trying to do here, it's just that there are some aspects of the, the plan, the parking, that need to be, I think, worked out with the neighbors. And that I think that could be done, like we said, within the next, the two weeks. But, you know, I think as a board, we're respectful of, of Enley as well. I mean, they're, they're a good addition to Situate. I think it's a, you know, it's a, you know, it's a good school, but you have to work within the neighborhood too. So, so we're not trying to, I guess what I want to say is, we're not trying to like, make it difficult for you, we just want to make sure that we're, we're going through the right avenue, for lack of a better term, the right avenue.
Conversely, the neighbors have to come back up and sit there and be willing to work with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Two-way street.
Reasonable approach.
Yeah. Oh, more puns.
One other thing that we mentioned early on that, that we should make sure get addressed and maybe you've already drafted something, would really be about the landscaping and the screening and making sure that that gets taken care of. And I know Karen had, had some comments about that and we may not have, it's almost 11, so maybe we can leave that or at least address that as the, as the follow-up on the 28th. That, that would be my suggestion.
I would just put it in the...
Okay, so, just to make sure that, that I'm on the same page, so between now, they're going to come back on the 28th.
Yeah.
And between now and the 28th, they're going to meet with the neighbors and that's going to be completely independent of the town. And they're going to provide...
Unless they want you there, I mean, it's up to you.
Um, they're going to provide some...
I think Laura should come.
Oh, oh, me?
It's, it's...
Well, actually, I, yeah, I, I didn't mean independent of me, I just meant independent of the traffic rules or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we've always had a good rapport and so on. So, um, and that if they have some quantified information about how many cars can they fit in these different locales, whether, you know, maybe they're going to have somebody do valet parking and they can really put them in tight. I mean, something like that would, you know, be like a clear way to get the cars where they want them to go, just as an example. But whatever they're going to do, they're going to have that spelled out and it's going to be quantifiable, so it'll be really clear. And then the, the pickup and drop-off, if there has to be an extra lane, somebody will have done a plan and it'll show where the extra lane is going to go, whatever, you know, their people think is the best way to get it to work. I mean, it, it sounds like an awful lot to get done in two weeks, but, you know, they're the ones doing it, not me, so.
There you go.
Yay.
Laura, could I clarify that if we are able to accomplish that, is there anything else we should be working on between now and then to be able to get an approval?
Um, I think that really goes to the board and not to me.
Right.
My fault, Josh.
Um, I think the access, you were going to meet with the state access board, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That has been scheduled.
Building access. Uh, the other thing that was mentioned earlier was about the trees and the screening and we want to make sure that there's a landscaping plan that, that addresses that.
Do we have that yet tonight?
We have, but this C2...
There, there were questions that came up about, you know, are the trees that are already there screening the field going to stay and, you know, so we, we should have, we should make sure the plan reflects what the actual...
Are you saying if we add the existing plantings to our proposed plantings, that would suffice?
What else were we missing? There were some additional screening that you've already got up here, right?
But there was screening for the art barn, they wanted screening for the art barn.
Right. I thought that's what they articulated here.
Right. But in that, the plan that's shown currently...
Yeah, it's kind of...
It doesn't show that the existing trees.
If, if we have them talk to you?
They've already actually shown new screening by the art barn. They're, they're proposing 41 six-to-eight-foot arborvitae.
Staggered.
Staggered, five feet on center, which is a dense screen. So if they just show the existing trees, I think that will help everybody understand that, I think it is going to be screened.
Okay.
And on, and on the engineering drawing, what Paul had is a presentation drawing. On the engineering drawings, we show the existing tree lines here as the existing and to remain, not...
To remain, okay.
We had, we did have a note on one of the plans to, uh, C3, that any of the existing trees in this area would not be removed as part of the project and staging and that type of thing, stored would be around.
Even during construction, you, those will be a, a no, clear zone or anything?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right up in here on the C3 drawing, so a construction staging area within existing open area, existing trees shall remain, right there. So I think that, that pretty well defines the intent there.
And where is that, on the field?
Uh, just in, in between the field and Watch Hill Drive. So this is the existing...
All the way up, right.
Yeah, here's the field here, so you take about probably the midpoint of the field is where the property line, so all those trees over in here.
All right, but on the picture, trees a little to the left of where your hand was is what looked like was cleared and that's what we, we were also concerned about, looked like existing trees were coming out.
I think that was the presentation drawing showed that there was a, showed that there was almost like no trees right there.
Right. And, and just to clarify, the intention is to put the new tree screen here and leave all the existing here. There's, there's, there's no reason really for us to take any trees out in this area. Uh, this is the existing knoll, that, that's all to remain untouched.
So the existing, you just said you were going to put the new trees in where the presentation drawing had not, so we're, we're not touching those big existing trees.
Up in this area? No, we're not touching anything up in this area.
And then once you get past the, the dash line, that's somebody else's property there.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
Okay. I think that's it?
Yeah.
One other logistical, just so everyone knows.
I agree.
Uh, for the, in two weeks, I will not be here, so it'll be Ann voting, I believe.
Okay. Okay, so...
Just, just so everyone knows, it's clear on that.
We all clear? Okay, we need to do a continuance.
Okay, yeah, so I guess I will ask them to fill out a request like we did before and it's going to say, it's going to be continued to May 28th at 7:30. And someone can make a motion that at the applicant's request, they move to continue.
So at the, I, I move that at the applicant's request, we continue the public hearing, or actually, I'm sorry.
Site plan administrative review.
Yeah. For, um, where's the address?
Forty-sixth.
Oh, for 46th Watch Hill Drive, the Enley School, until May 28th.
Yeah, May 28th.
At 7:30 PM.
Second?